Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's the 29th of May 2025 and welcome to the ordinary council meeting for today and the time is 9am. And I'll call attendance and we have everyone in attendance except for the deputy mayor in attendance and I'll be moving for a leave of absence later in this meeting. I'll then start off with a acknowledgement of country. If the city council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share, we pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. This morning, we're very, very fortunate to have Pastor John Meath from the Vision Christian Family who will offer us an opening prayer. May I ask for Pastor John to please come to the lectern? Thank you. Thank you, Pastor John. We'd love to hear a bit about your congregation, your church, and before you lead us into prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of Vision Christian Family. We're located in at 58 Letson Street, North Levell, if you're not sure where we are. And I just want to take the opportunity on behalf of our congregation to thank the mayor, the councillors and all the council staff for their efforts in making our city what I think is a great place to live, to work and to play. And I want to particularly thank the city council for its 2025 community event funding grants, which amongst other things now, City help us to host our annual free Sunday Fun Day, which involves up to 900 Ipswich residents in a friendly, family-friendly community event. And the support of the council is certainly a key factor in our ability to make this event happen. So yeah, so thanks very much for that. Let's pray for today's proceedings. Father God, we thank you for this gathering today. Your word, the Bible strongly exhorts us that we should always pray for those who exercise governance in whatever community we find ourselves a part of. And in such prayer, we pray for the individuals concerned in civic decision-making, especially our mayor and the councillors here today, and also for the numerous city council staff who assist and help carry out this governance. We know that Ipswich, as with all communities, is diverse in its makeup, cultures, opinions and preferences. And this diversity represents real challenges upon those who are appointed to make decisions for the whole. Therefore, Lord, we humbly ask for your enabling wisdom, your grace and your guidance upon each of our elected members today in their deliberations. And we extend a blessing to our community as a whole. We understand that many people in our city do not find life easy and we remain particularly mindful of their needs. I pray that the work of this council overflows into a tangible blessing upon each and every person in our great city. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor John. Thank you. And yes, your Christmas Family Fun Days are pretty fantastic with the rock climbing and a lot of other fun activities as well. Thank you. We now move on to apologies and a leave of absence. I'd like to move a leave of absence for Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnock. Do I have a second for that? Council Antonelli, thank you. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Just before we go into the meeting, obviously, every ordinary council meeting is a pretty important one, but today probably the thing that's very important, I think, very for our city is that we'll be looking at the new city of Ipswich plan coming in. So I'd like to see some people in the public gallery here who were seeing that as well. It's a big achievement for us. So whilst every item on the agenda is very important, I think we'll spend a bit of time on that. I think the Chair of that committee is also keen to speak to it as well. Item five are the condolences and there are none. Item six are tributes. And I'd like to give a tribute to three Ipswich young men who gave assistance in the rescue of tourists. So I'd like to give a tribute for Kaywen Blaine, Tiger Pulkurd and Xavier Fing. I'd like to pay tribute to the selflessness and courage of three young Ipswich Rugby League players who assisted the rescue of two tourists caught in dangerous surf conditions. While enjoying a trip to the beach, they did not hesitate when they were asked to help two Nepalese tourists caught in a dangerous rip current. Kaywen Blaine, 16, Tiger Pulkurd, who's 16, and Xavier Fing, who was 15 at the time, were with friends when they stopped in at Zenith Beach at Port Stephens in New South Wales on the 14th of April during the school holidays. Kaywen said that when they arrived at the beach, a panicked Nepalese man approached him and told him his friends were drowning and could they help. They looked out and could see three 13-year-olds were also struggling after heading out to try and rescue the two tourists in trouble. Well, without a second thought to their own safety, they ran toward the danger. Tiger was able to grab a board and the friend group all got together and the friends all grouped up and got in through the water. Using the disciplined teamwork and drive they honed on the footy field, they were able to pull the first swimmer and the three young teenagers to shore. Bystander CPR started CPR on Bishop Le Curieux when his scared friend said there was still another person in the water. With the waves crashing well over their heads, they again were able to locate the second swimmer, Raj Kumar Bahora, and get him onto the board. Tiger told me that it was very difficult to keep him on the board and others came to assist. Kaywen recounted it being the scariest when they were pushed against the rock wall as they waited between waves to get the man to the shallows. Xavier explained the people on the beach then also came to start CPR on this second man. The police came to their aid, then a lifeguard from a patrol beach nearby, followed by the ambulance's fire and rescue and more lifeguards. These three young North Tigers Juniors Rugby League footballers, teammates, friends and now heroes, prove that greatness isn't just measured on the field but in the choices we make when others are in need. They didn't act for glory, they didn't ask for recognition, they acted on the instinct. And today, a young man named Bishop Le Curieux is alive because of their extraordinary efforts. Sadly, Raj Kumar Bahora died in hospital, but he was not lost at sea, thanks to these young men and their friends. And I think it will be of some comfort to his family. I was alerted to this act of bravery by Ipswich Jets CEO Richard Hughes, who said the actions of the boys reflected greatly on both the club and the community. Richard said the Ipswich Jets Club were incredibly proud to have young people like Kaywen, Tiger and Xavier representing the Ipswich Jets Juniors and living out the club's values of respect to leadership, service and compassion. I met with Kaywen and Tiger from Ipswich State High School and Xavier from Bremer State High School and their families to present them with commendation certificates. Our community values helping others and these three young men are to be commended for their actions and they are excellent young role models throughout others. Kaywen told me that if anyone needs a hand, you should just help them out. It doesn't have to be rescue. Doing something small can be beneficial as doing something big. It is these quiet acts of courage that truly remind us of the power of having good character. So to Kaywen, Tiger and Xavier, your quick thinking and bravery made a significant difference, exemplifying outstanding teamwork and a commitment to helping others in need. On behalf of the City of Ipswich, we are proud of you and wish you all the very best for your bright future. Item seven are the presentations of petitions, there are none. Item eight, presentations and deputations, there are none. Item nine, public participation, there is, it's nil. Ten, matters of public interest, nil. Eleven, declarations of interest and matters of the agenda. I think, councillor Madden, you had one that you had. Thank you very much, councillor Madden.
Thanks, Mayor. I just need to make a declaration of a conflict of interest that was previously declared and determined at another meeting of council. In accordance with section 150 ET, subparagraph four of the Local Government Act 2009, I, James Edward Madden, previously declared a declarable conflict of interest in relation to item 16.4 of this agenda, titled renewal of membership for healthy land and water within the Conservation and Sustainability Committee during the council meeting dated the 15th of October 2024. The eligible councillors at the meeting resolved that I could remain in the meeting, including voting on the matter. Mayor?
Do you mind outlining what that conflict of interest was? Thank you, councillor Madden.
For a brief period, I was a member of the Healthy Waterways Board, but in 2016, Healthy Waterways was dissolved and Healthy Land and Water was created by merging Healthy Waterways and SEQ Catchmans. Since that time, I've had no involvement with regard to healthy land and water. Mayor?
Thank you. Are you friends or anything of the current member of the current board there? Acquaintances. Are you, do you have any personal or financial benefit to this matter? Thank you. Are there any other questions of councillor Madden? In that case, I'll move that councillor Jim Madden participates and votes on items 16.4, titled Update Healthy Land and Water Membership, because there is no personal financial benefit to the councillor and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Martin. Any questions, any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Sorry, councillor Martin. Yeah, sorry. Thank you. It's unanimous in noting that councillor Madden has abstained. Thank you. Are there any other conflicts of interest? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yes, I wish to inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 12, which is the confirmation of minutes, in that a matter pertaining to those minutes relates specifically to me. I'll leave it up to the councillors to make their decision.
I'm getting furrowed by councillor Tully. I don't think there's a-
There's a point of order that, you know, the determination, a person's made a declaration that has to be dealt with, but it's never been regarded except to determine whether or not the minutes are inaccurate. It's not a review of the matter, it's not confirmation, it's just, it's just the meeting, confirmation of this meeting that those minutes are correct.
I would concur with you. Do you wish to proceed with it?
Because obviously I'd left the room during that time, so.
Okay, so do you wish to raise a conflict of interest and leave it to us or do you-
Well, in light of that advice, if it's not relevant, then I'll retract that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other conflicts? Thank you. We then go on to item 12, the confirmation of minutes. So any questions on them? Errors, corrections? I will move them. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Madden. I'll put those to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room and carried. Thank you very much. Next items, merrill minute, there is none. The next item is item 14, business outstanding and there is none. Next we go to item 15, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. And we go to item 15.1, which is the report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. And councillor Antonelli and I did have a discussion this morning about excluding items six and nine. Could I just confirm, how would you like this report managed, councillor Tully?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number 04 of 2025, the 20th of May 2025, for reception and adoption with the exclusion of items six and nine.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. As the Chair of that committee, do you wish to speak to the matter, councillor Doyle?
Yeah, I note, Mayor, that items one and two refer specifically to Division One, so no doubt those councils will speak, or particularly councillor Augustine raised item one. Item two refers to Division One, so there may be some discussion there from those councillors. But just with respect to item one, the report is in relation to a motion that was moved, brought to this council by councillor Augustine in relation to both sports facility fencing and electrical switchboards. I commend the staff for their report and note the fact that that's something that we will be taking consideration of in future events. And I think that that's a very smart move, particularly in relation to that fencing. I just speak briefly to item five, which is the Asset Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report. And those who have read the report would note that during the month of March, we did not deliver as much as we would have liked because we had a significant event occur to this city which did hold us up somewhat, that being ex-tropical cyclone Alfred. So even though our monthly expenditure was significantly lower than normal and a number of projects were held over, I can assure you, and certainly the general manager of that department has assured me, that we have caught up and we are back on track. So just thought I'd advise the community of that.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Councillor Madden, as a second, do you, sorry, councillor Doyle, sorry, do you wish, as a second, do you wish to speak to the report? Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's in relation to a query that I'd raised. This is on page 78 of 241. It's the earlier question about the corner of Red Bank Plains Road and Kruger Parade and the holdup in the finalisation of the upgrade of that section of Red Bank Plains Road with urban utilities. And in particular, it appears that nothing has really happened, that there's a major water main in that intersection, which is planned to be changed from a roundabout to a signalised intersection. There is a safety issue involved. There are children who go to the nearby Kruger State School and they've got now with the roundabout, of course, so the ongoing roundabout, but it's a temporary roundabout. The, I'm concerned that there seems to have been no movement of any substantial nature by urban utilities since February, when the remainder of the road south towards Kedgers Road has been completed. I'm concerned that this could drag on for many more months. I really appeal to urban utilities to, you know, affect that. Now, this main, of course, goes back a long period of time prior to the amalgamation of Mawtonshire and Ipswich City Council in 1995. So it's probably a fairly large operation, but we're in the hands of urban utilities. They are responsible for it. They really need to get their act together because the community's saying, yeah, why have we still got this temporary facility there where there's safety issues involved and urban utilities don't seem to be doing anything to resolve it in a timely manner.
No, thank you, councillor Tully, for raising that. And I'm just looking over at my chief of staff to make a note. We could chat with councillor Tully and approach the board and the CEO of Urban Utilities to raise this matter with him. Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Are there any other, any other discussion? Yes, councillor Augustine?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, councillor Antonelli. The sports and the sports facility fencing and the electrical switchboard, I commend the officers who did a great report on this to really bring down the estimates of what the different sort of fencings would be in case there is an additional flood. And going forward, I think sporting groups in particular will be better served. And then the second one was the response to the petition. This one in particular, I did, as I said in the meeting, at the committee meeting, that I did actually go and visit this area and the area was immaculately kept. And but subsequent to that as well, in our briefing, the, we got briefed on what could be done better, oh, how are we going to do stuff better and in an operational sense. And I think it's going to be well received by our community. Mayor?
Thank you for raising that, councillor Augustine. And I note too that I think a number of councillors also added a few other fencing and sporting locations as well. Thank you. If there's nothing more, I'll put the matter, I'll just check with the move of councillor Tully and nothing else. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We'll then move on to item six of 5.1, which is the adoption of the city plan. Before we do that, I would like to call up Mr Rule and probably Mr Davy as well to the lectern. I'll ask him to give an overview of the plan and then I have some questions. And then I think we'll go to moving and seconding, if I may. Thank you. The Chair of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee, myself, have asked Mr Rule if he could give a bit of an overview of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors. Well, this is a very significant milestone in the life of our new planning scheme project and for this city. Great cities don't wait. That's why we needed a new plan for the city to shape our future and position ourselves for success over the next 20 years. This plan is bold and visionary, telling the story of Ipswich and its people and places, striking the right balance between protecting the areas we love and providing opportunities for new housing and jobs. From Gales to Granchester, from Flinders Peak to the Bremer's Deep, this is a plan for all of the city, our city of centres, our open places and our heritage places. This is a plan that strengthens our character, embraces the arts, provides for businesses and streamlines pathways for the right development in the right place at the right time. This plan will aid in the reviving of our city heart and the renewal of our suburbs. Its modern codes will see density done well. And where goodwill meets good design, the benefits to the community will speak for themselves. The plan doesn't shy away from the tough challenges either. Rather, it faces them head-on, like its new risk-based approach to managing natural hazards, the impacts of a changing climate and the new types of housing we need for our diverse population. The plan represents best practice planning grounded on hard evidence and data, extensive background studies and research, to give us the best shot possible to provide a well-planned city of opportunity for all. It's not just a plan for land use but also for supporting infrastructure. Our new local government infrastructure plan outlines what critical local infrastructure is required to cater for our growing population. This moment represents the culmination of over seven years of hard work across multiple council departments. It's been through a rigorous state interest review process and extensive community consultation, recognised already by three awards for planning excellence. So having received the state government sign-off in February this year, council's approval today is the final step in the process before the plan can be adopted and take effect. And so we're very proud to bring before council today a new city plan and local government infrastructure plan, ready for growth, ready to start the next chapter in our city's history.
Thank you very much, Mr Rule. We appreciate that overview. I have a couple of questions. How does this plan protect floodplains from development?
Well, Mayor, the new plan, as I said, includes a new risk-based approach to managing natural hazards. And so Ipswich is a city that is essentially built on part of a floodplain. And so one of the features of this plan is to use a very well-considered scientific methodology to determine risk and then basically based policy decisions on that risk. So the idea is to protect people and property from the hazards and impacts of flooding and also bushfire. And so inside the scheme, through zoning and through the overlay codes, there's a lot of provisions there to protect the public interest and to make sure that we build the city in the right places.
Thank you. How does the plan offer additional protections for First Nations and our broader heritage?
Yeah, so the plan takes a number of initiatives around recognition of First Nations people and in terms of protection of cultural heritage sites. So there's a number of things and you'll find that from the very first pages of the plan, recognition of our First Nations people. And in terms of heritage, the plan picks up on the current planning provisions around heritage and actually makes that stronger, reinforces a lot of those character provisions, making sure that we protect our character and that where we have new development, that we see good adaptive reuse of those heritage buildings and making sure that we use heritage as our great asset rather than a liability.
Thank you. I often hear from residents, but in our newer developments, that there's not enough community spaces. How will this plan address that?
Yeah, so through the design codes in the planning scheme, there is a number of features that require developments to make sure that we're providing parks. And so our LGIP, our Local Government Infrastructure Plan, provides the 20-year plan for our open space network and making sure that we have, we have good open spaces that connect, providing street trees and providing areas to recreate and enjoy, enjoy our open spaces.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Mr Rule and Mr Davy. I'll open up. Are there any other questions? I think you've got your light on, councillor Tully. Oh, sorry. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr Rule, and thank you again for all your work on this. The mayor has already raised issues around flooding. And I know we've had recent discussions about what the new flood mapping and overflow overlays might mean for property owners. Just confirming again when those updated maps might be available for members and residents living in our community.
Yeah, so we are, after, if council decides to approve the plan- Yeah, so we are, after if if council decides to approve the plan, uh we will have a version uh that will be uh going uh a pre-release version prior to the first of July. And so the idea then would be uh that people can have access to those maps as well as uh new provisions in the planning scheme before they take effect.
And if a resident um has concerns after reviewing those those maps in relation to their specific property, um so I've certainly um heard from residents over the last few years that um they they've formed a view that their property isn't impacted by flooding, and yet, you know, mapping does show otherwise. Um how would they address that issue with council if they if they really formed that view?
Yeah, look, we're happy, our team is very happy to talk to every member of the community that has a concern about flooding or stormwater. It it is a it is quite a seismic change from the current plan, and so we're happy to provide the information around what do those new risk categories mean for their property and help them understand what that what they can and cannot do on their property.
Um and we we did um do some work um around what a flood search might show for a prospective buyer. Um I remember this session quite well. Um you know, my view is um there are some that own properties in our community that um are a very um astute and well-read, and they will be aware of what the new maps mean. But for others, the first time they will realise it's potentially um uh challenging for their for their property will be will be when they go to sell. So um a prospective buyer will conduct um a flood search with council. Um what does that flood search show? What level of detail will be within that search so that prospective buyers will understand the risks fully?
Yeah, so there's a there's a few things here, but I guess the the key thing would be with the new city plan, it will have uh the ability to do a flood report as well as a development report on each property. And so people will be able to select that, uh it'll show a range of information around the flood uh the flooding situation. It'll it'll show levels and depth and things like that, so that they'll have a full appreciation for the risk of flood on that property and then what that means in terms of development opportunities.
Okay, so um we know historically, well, certainly in the last ten years, I think um there's been um a a move to um very limited searches being conducted by prospective buyers. And that's usually driven by um expensive legal costs when you purchase a property. Uh so they may not automatically select a flood search. Going forward, i- i- if if um a conveyancer or a prospective buyer comes to council for a a council search, will it automatically include flood information? And if not, what does that education piece look like in the community, particularly with conveyances, um solicitors or real estate agents?
Yeah, so I guess uh the the city plan does have that feature. There's also other ways council can uh people can get that information from council through a proper uh planning and development certificate, I think they're called. So there's a few um, yeah, a few different ways that people can obtain that.
Uh Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services. Uh councillor, we can also have a look at um exceeding the the search provisions. So, for example, uh you're right, the a conveyor when consulting with a purchaser may choose to cut back on uh the level of detail in searches, including they might say, I'm not going to pay two hundred dollars for a flood search or whatever the relevant fee is. Uh that is allayed somewhat by the information being free through the planning scheme. Uh but we can also have a review of our uh search outcomes to see if there's some other advancements we can make there, noting the the floodlines. Uh there are some restrictions though in uh when there's a statutory search, making sure that we only provide what we're asked to provide from a a statutory perspective.
Um if we could change topics to something that I'm very passionate about, and I know you are, Mister Rule, um heritage. Um so thank you again for all the work that's been done as part of the new plan um around heritage. Um we've obviously had discussions about the limitations um in in protecting heritage from a local government perspective. I'm not talking about those heritage properties in Ipswich that are on the state register. I'm talking about those that um are are locally uh important to us. And council's um lack of powers, I guess, to issue a notice of repair to avoid the demolition by neglect. Um we we've discussed, I am aware of provisions within the uh state heritage legislation and a regulation that may that council could apply to uh for, to gain those additional powers to be in a position to issue a notice of repair. Um can you um confirm how we might look at doing that going forward, what that process might look like?
Yeah, sure, so that will be a separate process to what's in the what the plan allows for now, but into and I think that follows the Brisbane City Council example of where they've they're in the the regulation identifies council to take those actions. So that would be something that would need to be um investigated as part of a pathway towards if Ipswich wanted to go down that road. Um we would we would have to work on a process and and some systems around that.
So some work this group could do going forward once um the plan is um in place.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, we can have a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions of Mister Rule? Thank you, councillor.
Not so much a question, but I'd just like to thank Mister Rule and and Mister Davy. And I know this has been a long journey for you and all your staff.
I'll get you to do that in the comments if that's okay, in the discussion. Are there any other questions of council officers? No, thank you very much, Mister Rule, thank you, Mister Davy, appreciate that. Um in that case, I will move the adoption of Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty five and the Local Government Infrastructure Plan twenty twenty five. Well, I assume councillor Antonelli that you will want, as the chair of that committee, that you'd like to second that. Thank you very much. Um in speaking to this today, we go from having the oldest planning scheme in the state to the newest. After six and a half years in the making, this new planning scheme brings a forward-thinking approach to managing growth and will ensure Ipswich has the right balance of residential, commercial, industrial and green space moving forward. This blueprint will unlock more housing in the right locations while protecting our established suburban and character residential areas. The new planning scheme and the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, or LGIP, has been subject to extensive community consultation and state interest review. We engaged the community extensively since early two thousand nineteen, and all phases of the community engagement campaign has been considered in the preparation of this new plan. Almost one hundred thousand people were engaged face-to-face, over the phone or online, or in letters in the formulation of this plan. We received almost twenty-eight thousand visits to the planning schemes webpage on our Shape Your Ipswich website during the consultation period. All our social media ads informing people of this consultation reached more than seventy thousand people. We also took the next step, we sent more than seventy-eight thousand letters to each individual Ipswich rate payer. Feedback from the five hundred and six submissions received during public consultation have also shaped and refined the final draft of the planning scheme and LGIP. The planning scheme supports diverse housing options, improved housing affordability and more appropriately zoned land supply. It paves the way for the construction of a hundred thousand new homes across Ipswich over the next twenty years. It provides opportunity for granny flats to be added and for more housing to be between one and three stories. It updates the zoning for suburbs such as Goodna, Riverview, Dinmore, Ebbevale, Bundamba, Bival and Wurkarako to increase allowable heights of buildings. These suburbs have established public transport services, particularly rail, and we continue to look at where we we look at where land near railway stations might be underutilised in terms of housing and could present opportunities for units and townhouses for our community. While the responsibility for housing policy primarily lies with the state and the federal governments, Ipswich City Council continues to advocate for more to be done to attract investment in these developments. The Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty five strengthens flood risk considerations through code-enforced requirements that developments do not pose an unacceptable risk to people and property from flooding. Ipswich is a city that needs more housing, but it's also a city that floods. And this reality must be considered when building the homes and infrastructure that our communities need. Council will not put our residents in harm's way of natural disasters, especially flooding, when we can make decisions around planning and development, and the Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty five reflects this. Waste and resource recovery activities must be established and operated in a manner that protects the community and the environment. The new Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty five will take the strong interim protections introduced by our Waste TLPI or the Temporary Local Planning Instrument and now make them permanent. For example, the new Resource Recovery and Waste Activity Code requires high-impact, difficult-to-locate-waste activities be located a minimum of five kilometres away from sensitive receiving uses, for example, residential development. I must acknowledge the work of the interim administrator Greg Chimello and the previous council. Uh Greg Chimello commenced the process for this new planning scheme. All the technical reports were prepared from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, and councils from the previous term will remember our fortnightly sessions for over eighteen months with councillors, planners and industry experts going through the technical reports and providing guidance and feedback on the community's expectation of their new planning scheme. The councils ensured that Ipswich residents had extensive community consultation. We went well above and beyond the legislated requirements. This process was recognised within the planning profession in November twenty twenty-three when councils awarded a Planning Institute of Australia Queensland award for excellence in the stakeholder engagement category for the new Ipswich planning scheme. As the Chair of Planning in the last term of council, I must also thank former councillor Andrew Fector for his involvement, time and insight into the new planning scheme and the LGIP. He was my go-to guy on all things planning, and we spent many hours discussing the pros and cons of the overlay zoning, the LGIP and how we can improve our city for our community. In January twenty twenty-four, council approved the planning scheme to go to the state for their final review. And in February this year, state government approved to proceed to adoption, with conditions, and council officers have been actioning the ministerial conditions since then. To you, CEO, and also the General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services, I thank you and I thank your teams for their leadership, for their professionalism, their patience, their willingness to explain and listen, and their willingness to assault and listen to us as councillors and listen to the community. Thank you so much for everything that you've done, it's been a long process and do really appreciate that, CEO and GM. Endorsing the Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty-five today will be the final step in a long journey of leading planning policy and rigours refined over many years. This single document implemented at a time of significant growth will shape our city more than any other as we move deeper into this century. Thank you. Councillor Antonelli, as the second, do you wish to make comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you for your comments in relation to that too. Um Mayor, I just um wish to go back a little and um talk to the previous plan. There's been a lot said that it is twenty years old. At the time when it was uh it was developed, it was an award-winning planning scheme. In fact, it was recognised in the state as one of the um certainly most innovative planning schemes of the day. Uh and even though it is a living document that gets changed and amended over time, it was time for us to start with a clean slate with this new planning scheme. The reason I mention it was award-winning is primarily because I believe that the work that has been undertaken here, and I commend specifically um both the General Manager Brett Davy and Nathan Rule in the lead of that planning area and their team. I believe they are worthy of the same level of praise. This is an incredible document. I remember when I was last planning chair back in twenty sixteen, the discussion commenced about a new planning scheme for our city, the time was right. We obviously had to wait until the state introduced new definitions, universal definitions for us to commence our work. However, one of the things I did stipulate at the time was that it was to be a user-friendly planning scheme, one that every person of the community, be they a developer or just um the mums and dads of our community could could read, access and understand easily, particularly online. Our population is now more than two hundred and sixty thousand. At the time of the last plan, it was half that. However, the significant factor here is that over the next twenty years, it will double. So we will have in excess of five hundred thousand people living in the city of Ipswich. We need a document to support that population. And I just uh wish to reiterate the fact that over a hundred thousand people were engaged as part of that community consultation, of which we received back over five hundred submissions. Each one of those submissions was reviewed and considered as part of this planning scheme. And as I said before, a planning scheme is a living document. What we plan today, what we write today, doesn't mean it is the hard and fast document for the next twenty years. It will uh potentially require further amendments going forward as the needs of our community change. And particularly, those needs may revolve around the changing workscape and living arrangements of our community community. Uh I believe that the new online and user-friendly planning functions and instruments that will be available on our council website will be something that will be warmly welcomed by our community. I just want to uh go through a couple of points in relation to the city plan, Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty-five, as it will be known. Uh some of the probably more pertinent points uh for people to understand about the plan because it will support the availability of diverse housing, including affordable living options through appropriately zoned land, targeted regulation and more streamlined development pathways. Now, obviously, affordable living, affordable housing is one of the most important things at the moment. As we go forward, over the next few years and the lead-up to the Olympics, housing affordability will be something of great concern to our community. So this planning document does take that into uh consideration. Uh it will rely on a modern approach to consideration of natural hazards, including flood and bushfire. It will provide land for future employment. And how that employment will look uh will be something that we will need to clearly watch as we go forward. It will protect regionally and locally significant environmental corridors, and it will include modernised development codes. As I said before, they will be universal um development uh codes and uh zones so that everybody can clearly understand them, be they in North Queensland or here in Ipswich. And it will protect the lifestyle of the Ipswich community by establishing suburban and character residential areas or continuing to protect those areas. Um it, one of the most important things with respect to government is the reduction of red tape, so it does ease regulation, particularly around dual occupancy and secondary dwellings. And this document, this Bible for planning, the Bible for our city going for- forward will provide great certainty to the residents of Ipswich. I want to take this opportunity in closing, I know I did recognise them earlier, but I would like to specifically applaud the work of our planning team, everyone involved in this. This was a Herculean task undertaken by very um skillful planners. Um I remember Nathan when he first came to Ipswich as a very young man. Very young man, I think you, this was your first council, was it not, Nathan? Then went on to uh other areas, including the state government, to work in their planning area. Um I think in many respects, Nathan, you can consider this your child and you can take great pride in the work you've done. To you and your team, congratulations.
Thank you, I'll now open up councillor Doyle for other commentary and discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um just um would like to um also um offer my gratitude to um Mister Brett Davy um and his entire team, as you pointed out, over the last uh five years, we've had in-depth sessions. I may have joked about getting an honorary uh planning degree. Um they stepped us uh through um the micro detail of the plan every step of the way and consulted with us and and sought, you know, any um concerns that we felt our residents may have had. So um I'm very, very grateful um for the team, I'm really excited. As uh Mister Rule pointed out, it's bold and it's visionary. Um and as has already been discussed, it is still a le- living, breathing um plan, and we will um potentially need to make amendments along the way. I touched on earlier in the questions around heritage, there is still work that needs to be done there. Um as the um councillor for Division Three, taking in a lot of the older, old, some of the older suburbs um across Ipswich, very conscious of the impact of infill development um on our character homes. We are already seeing um as a result of uh the housing crisis, the the change in the um uh the market here in Ipswich, improved valuations, we're seeing a lot more development pop up. We desperately need that additional housing, yes, but uh the infill development needs to be in keeping with um the character that it it may uh sit with. So really conscious of that and committed to the residents of Ipswich um that we will continue to work and watch closely as our population doubles in the coming uh years or decades. Um we need to grow um respectfully in relation to our heritage, but we also need to accommodate the new families that are coming to Ipswich. Just um finally, thank you again to the staff. I recall um an information session over at the Corporate Centre at the Reserve. Um and Mister Davy um was um absolutely had a captive audience there. Every professional sitting in that room that that had come along. Um the the confidence they had in him, every word that he said, it was, I felt very, very proud. Um and so should Mister Davy, he's very, he's held in very high regard uh in planning circles, so uh thank you, but the hard work isn't finished. But the hard work isn't finished. We we need to continue.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Councillor Madden.
Yep, um, Mayor, I'd just like to thank Mr Ruhl and Mr Davy and the CEO for the hard work with regard to um the Ipswich City Plan two thousand and twenty five. I've experienced some of it, but I realise it went back much further than my election in March of two thousand and twenty four. Um, just to put it in the, in the picture, um, the development of the Ipswich City Town Plan must bring it in line with the State Planning Act two thousand and sixteen, uh, the ministerial guidelines and rules, and also the ministerial conditions that the minister imposed on us when we sent the minister the draft guidelines. Um, I've already experienced some questions with regard to the planning scheme. And and tonight, um, Mayor, when you and councillor Martin and I attend the Carol Lee Community Association meeting, I'll be addressing a question that was put to me with regard to the change in the names of zones so that our planning scheme matches the um minister, the state, uh, the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen. Um, so I expect that we'll get more questions and we, and we may even get a request that a council officer attend a meeting at some stage to talk about it. But yesterday, I attended the Amberley Consultative um Working Group and an issue arose that will affect uh future town planning. And that's a current study by the uh federal government with regard to aircraft noise. And that's aircraft noise not just from military bases, but aircraft noise from uh civilian bases. And there's a meeting tonight at the um West Mac College where they're going to be talking about this. But um, and they just, they mentioned, the uh Amberley Raff officers mentioned they'd been in discussion with our council officers with regard to this. It's all very embryonic, um but certainly in the future, when people do conveyances, it might be that they don't just do a search with regard to transport the main roads and railways, they'll do a search with regard to aircraft noise. So um this is a moving feast, um and I expect that over the next period of time, uh myself and councillor Martin will regularly receive uh queries with regard to the new Ipswich City Plan two thousand and twenty five. And again, I'd like to thank Mr Ruhl, Mr Davy and and the CEO. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Madden. Councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor. I'd just like to make a few comments and also acknowledging the work of the staff, but also the contribution from the community as well. And I I guess that might be ongoing um and as the new plan comes into effect thirty-three days uh from today. Um, there's been mention, of course, of the longevity of the current plan, uh and that's true. But there were some benefits under, under the previous plan, uh which I mentioned at the committee meeting last week. The officers uh thought there were some benefits in maintaining that for as long as possible. One of those was the implementation guidelines, which council could readily pass to uh give appropriate information and guidance to developers, to the community and and to staff and councillors about the interpretation of parts of the scheme and how so that the implementation guidelines were consistent with the scheme and provided an opportunity which no longer exists under, under current uh legislation. There's been mention of the flooding overlays, um and that might cause some grief in the community, uh not immediately, but perhaps when sales are made. Um, and those flooding overlays are are quite informative. I I think the discussion before about what information is provided on the planning certificates, we need to address whether or not, if that information is now in the system, available free of charge, whether or not it should be incorporated automatically in the basic certificates. And I'd, I think we need to give um due consideration to um a review of what information is automatically provided in those um certificates. Um, the, the highest flood on record, of course, um in the city was um eighteen ninety-three. And at Goodna, um councillors would be aware of what I call the world's tallest flood marker, uh just adjacent to the Goodna roundabout, and that shows um the various levels of floods since, uh, including eighteen ninety-three, the three floods in in February of eighteen ninety-three. The peak of that flood was um uh twenty-two point seven seven metres at at Goodna. Just uh by comparison, the um nineteen seventy-four flood at Goodna was approximately eighteen point four, eighteen point five metres. So that was a gigantic flood. People sometimes ask me, how do you know what the flood level was in eighteen ninety-three? Because the Brisbane, yeah, well, the Brisbane Courier was reporting on the um Brindle, Brisbane Metal Asylum at Waikau, and they had a flood gauge there on the river in feet and inches. And that was recorded, um not realising over the short distances. Most people who learned a little bit of physics at school on the days that I was listening to the teacher, that water finds its own level, so we can accurately indicate what those flood levels were uh at Goodna uh because of the um availability of that um information uh from um eighteen ninety-three. There was a mention of the city of centres. That was a a concept which Gary White, who was a former planning manager based on a Canadian concept, where cities need to realise that no longer, and this is fairly universal in Australia, not everyone needs to go into a CBD um anymore. Um, in earlier days, CBDs were the lawyers were, the accountants were, the doctors and so on. Now we're a city of centres stretching from Springfield and Goodna, you know, west to Rosewood. And they're legitimate centres. We need to recognise them. And uh this um new planning scheme certainly does that. And the importance of those um si- as a city of centres are are the legitimate rights. You know, whether it's at Bouvale, Red Bank Plains, Brassel or any other part of the city, um that people uh in the residential areas are attracted to those uh centres without necessarily having to come into the CBD. And that creates a challenge for us to ensure that our CBD is an attractor uh for other reasons. We've talked about uh daytime, nighttime, entertainment and attracting people um into our, our mall um area. The other thing I would say is that with any new planning scheme, um there'll be issues that arise, what what are often called unintended consequences. We need to encourage people to um come, come to the council, come to councillors. And you know, if there are issues that have arisen, not just with flooding overlays, but any part of the scheme. Uh, as I said at the committee meeting last week, I believe that we should um have an annual review, which could be fairly minor. In the first couple of years, that could be um uh significant. But we should be prepared to make it a living document, as councillor Antonelli said, uh to ensure that those reviews um are conducted and uh not a major review, not necessarily uh doing anything but um uh looking closely at all of the issues that are raised by staff, by councillors and by the community and developers um in that period of time. So it's a, it's a red letter day um today, um hopefully with the passing of this and an even greater red letter day on the first of July.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other commentary? Councillor Martin?
I'd like, pardon me, I'd like to concur with everything that's been said before. I don't want to bore everybody repeating the same things. Do agree with councillor Doyle with regard to heritage. My wife and I live in a house that's over a hundred years old that we restored and think that we certainly as a city need to embrace our heritage uh whilst also embracing our future. One thing I would like to say, which hasn't been spoken about, is the lack of infrastructure in our city. And I certainly want to see um our state and federal government stepping up to the mark with duplications of our highways, our interchanges. Councillor Madden alluded to the fact we're going to Carol Lee tonight, big concerns out there. Seriously want to see that come to pass. I want to see our second river crossing, Norman Street Bridge. I want to see the Willow Bank interchange come to pass and obviously our Ipswich Springfield rail line. So I want to see these things and we'll certainly be putting pressure on our state and federal colleagues to see these things come to pass. Once again, thank you, Mr Ruhl, Mr Davy, your team, CEO, everybody involved in producing a document that I trust we will all be proud of. Love this city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Any other commentary? Yes, councillor Madison? Thank you.
Um, yeah, I just too wanted to take the opportunity, given it's a pretty momentous piece of work, to just um congratulate everyone um involved on on their efforts and seeing through. It's been a a pretty long journey, but um a worthwhile one. And um there is actually, it is worth mentioning um some of those infrastructure challenges that councillor Martin spoke to. Um, what our city is doing is we're taking on a a reasonable um burden. Uh, well, it's also an opportunity. It's just one of those difficult things to express about planning. Um, our city is taking on a large um amount of the required housing supply in South East Queensland to accommodate the population that's moving to our area. And um well, we've got a plan that's pretty good for that. Um, we need those state um agencies that are very heavily involved in that infrastructure to um make sure that that's delivered, um because that's a, that's a huge concern in um in many areas of Ips- Ipswich. And um while we're, we see the opportunity of growing as a city and having more economic opportunity, um it's, it's pretty critical that the state follows through and um supports, supports that.
Thank you so much, councillor Madison. Uh, councillor Augustine?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I too welcome um this uh plan. And uh even though I've just came in on the eh, the tail end for the gravy of of this uh plan, but I have had a number of um uh residents or even potential, uh in particular, some tourist operators that have been waiting for this to to come in and be implemented. And um, you know, so it does for, for me, it gives great certainty for um for our residents, our um tourist operators or our um organisations through our city to go forward in a positive way. Um, the document, um wow, it was just incredible. So uh thank you so much for all your work and even all your staff um that um took the time to um put this together. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Councillor, did you wish to make another comment?
Uh, well, it's not so much a comment. I just want to join in with uh councillor Tully, where he mentioned that we were fortunate that we had a flood marker at um Goodna Mental Hospital. But Ipswich, Ipswich City is also fortunate in that the uh the builders of Saint Mary's Church were good enough to record the eighteen ninety-three flood levy, uh level on the east side entrance to the church. The interesting thing is that church didn't exist in eighteen ninety-three. Uh, there was another church there, very similar design, but much smaller. But when they uh, when they built the current Saint Mary's, they were good enough to inscribe, chip into the uh the entrance, the actual levee. And for people that are interested, if that flood had taken place when that church was there, it'd have about a foot of water through it in eighteen ninety-three, just to give you an idea of flood heights. So a fair bit of uh Ipswich was flooded in eighteen ninety-three and again in eighteen ninety-four. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Madden. I'll have to check that that marker out. Any other points? Oh, just as I guess, you know, in a writer reply, thank you so much for um all the commentary from each, every councillor. Obviously, bringing in a planning scheme is um, you know, one of the core deliverables for a city and and how we manage uh the developments in our city. Um, and I think uh the council's brought up some um really great points that it's a a living document. Um, there were some discussions about obviously conveyancing and um I know that um the state government and and just through the regional plans, we've had discussions with REIQ, the real estate uh industry of Queensland, to encourage them to have a little, a card on on all contracts to encourage them to to go to that free flood mapping. And there is a bit of resistance there. But um, yeah, I I think that's be great to to see that there. Um, in regards to uh Raff Base Amberley, obviously our um defence is formally consulted. Um, the noise modelling and noise management, I think, was under the, under the current scheme as well as this, this new scheme as well. So that is continually updated, which is great. And thank you for talking about um infrastructure and the importance of the local government infrastructure plan there as well. As we know, councils only receive three percent of all taxes. The state, the federal government receive eighty-one percent of all taxes and the state receive sixteen percent. So as a big part of this is the planning, so we can advocate to those different levels of government uh to ensure that we do get our fair share. So thank you so much for all your contribution. And on that, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. It's now nine fifty-nine, so I'll call that we have an adjournment till uh ten thirty. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. All those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll see you back at ten thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome back. It's ten thirty-one, we've just had a half hour adjournment and it's the twenty-ninth of May in the ordinary council meeting. We are on item fifteen point one and report number nine, which is the notice of motion of urgent matter regarding the Mount Crosby Road overpass. Now I will assume councillor Madden, do you wish to move that? Yeah, and we have a second for that, thank you councillor. Um, Martin, I'd like to propose, as put my email last night, a an amendment to this, if I could get Vicky to put the amendment up. And I'll read it out then. So I sent an email to council last night to advise of proposed amendment I'd like to make to councillor Madden's motion made during the suspended committee meeting, and I'm supportive councillor Madden's motion to address the accelerated delivery of the Carrollay interchange and repairs to the Bremmer River Bridge and so on. I've put there as as the amendment, as a matter of urgency, the mayor write to the Queensland Minister for Transport and Main Roads, the Honourable Brett Mickleberg MP, and federal minister for infrastructure transport, regional development and local government, the Honourable Catherine King MP, and that the CEO write to the Director General of the Department of Transport and Main Roads, Miss Sally Stannard, and the Secretary of the Department of Infrastructure Transport, Regional Development, Communications, Sport and Arts, Mr Jim Betts, to request that the Queensland and Australian governments expedite the construction of the proposed Carrollay interchange and the repairs to the westbound Bremmer River Bridge at Carrollay on the Warrigo Highway. The only thing I've added really in there is the, I guess, the federal interchange, that elected rep to elected rep and CEO to DG.
If you wish, I'll move the amendment.
Thank you very much, thank you councillor Madden, thank you. So that is the live motion. Do you wish to speak to the matter? Is he seconded? Do you wish to speak to councillor Madden?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, I agree, I think it's of prime importance, particularly with poor residents of Carrollay. There's only one way into the place at the moment, they have to travel extensively to get where they are, to try and get in and out of the place. Traffic jam was already horrendous before this accident, so I'd certainly like to see yeah, us put pressure on our state and federal colleagues to see that come to pass, so you're well done, we certainly support the move, thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin, and thank you both for you know, you were doing the constant reporting on the Friday and the Saturday and the Sunday, letting residents know what was happening, thank you. I'll leave it for other discussion and comments, councillor Tully.
Yes, thank you mayor, just forty minutes ago we were talking about our city plan and and councillor Martin raised the pertinent point that as a growing city over the next twenty years, we are one of the fastest, if not the fastest growing city in the nation, so um, it seems to be at times that we make one step forward and take two steps back as a city. Uh, we received some welcome news during the federal election that there would be a new interchange there at Ambly, uh, two hundred and fifty million invested into that, and I think that that is long overdue and certainly welcome funding from the federal government in that regard, and once that happens, I'm sure we'll be very, very, very pleased, but of course, the two steps back has been the damage to the two bridges there on the Warrigo, uh, the Bremmer River, sorry, the Brisbane River crossing there at Bundamba, and then just a kilometre up the road, the damage, uh, it is the Bremmer River, sorry, my apologies, I did have it right the first time. Um, and then a kilometre up the road, the damage to the Mount Crosby Road overpass. Um, it doesn't, as councillor Martin has highlighted, it has impacted the residents Carrollay, who are certainly those residents north of the highway, but it has had far reaching implications to many other suburbs, including the CBD, where traffic now is forced to divert in order to avoid all of that, um, I guess, all of that carnage that occurs there. Just yesterday, there was or yesterday afternoon, I believe there was an accident on the Warrigo Highway, and that caused an enormous backlog in many respects, all the way to Wayco, traffic was slowed, so um, I do urge the federal government to bring both of these projects forward fast so that all the residents of Ipswich, the fastest growing city in the nation, can move forward.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Madden, would you like to say something?
Um, as you appreciate, mayor, this has been a saga for me, both as a state MP and as a councillor. I think it's always worthwhile explaining to people that live in Ipswich the importance of the Warrigo Highway to people who don't live in Ipswich. You want to go to Charleville, you want to go to Bullier, you've got to cross that Bremmer River Bridge, you know, and you've got to negotiate, you know, wind tower trucks running into interchanges, I mean, it was in it was in two thousand and three that Transport and Main Roads conducted a, a community consultation to choose which of two options to take with regard to the new, I call it the Carrollay interchange, I think that's the best title for it, but it doesn't really have a name. Um, at that point, they said by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, they had released the final designs, they didn't release the final designs, and in the intervening period, we found out that the Bremmer River Bridge had major structural problems, but the good news about all of this is both the state and federal government in various budgets have committed funding for the repairs um, to the Bremmer River Bridge and for the construction of the Carrollay interchange. And I think it's just one of those situations, and I think, may, you may have alluded to this at different times. Um, we're very interested spectators in the negotiations between the federal and the state government. Anything we can do to accelerate those negotiations is a worthwhile exercise, and I fully expect tonight at the Carrollay Community Association meeting, we'll get questions about this, when it's not really our issue, it's a Transport and Main Roads issue, but you know, people, they, they look at the three levels of government and don't really know where they begin and end, so we'll probably spend a fair bit of time explaining what you've been told, mayor, and what I've been told, and what councillor Martin's been told, and at the end of the day, we just want work to start, you know, and if it's not starting, we want an explanation why it's not starting. If they couldn't prepare the final design for the Carrollay interchange by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, have the courtesy to tell us why they couldn't prepare it. At least put a new information statement out saying when it will be prepared. At the moment, it's silence, and of course, in amongst that silence, we've had this catastrophe with a truck running into the Mount Crosby Road, Warrigo Highway overpass, so uh, the purpose, the reason why I brought this motion, and it's now been amended by the mayor, which I'm quite happy with, excellent amendments, mayor, we just want project progress, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of everyone that has to use the Warrigo Highway, that includes people coming down the Brisbane Valley Highway um, from the Somerset, um, people in Russell and North Ipswich and Carrollay and Chuar and Brownpoint Colo, they just want to get to work and want to get home in a reasonable time, but um, uh, we just want a road that where an accident doesn't mean the entire highway is shut down. If, if that interchange had been built, and that truck had, and the truck hit that, um, that the Mount Crosby Road, Warrigo Highway, uh, overpass, traffic could have used the interchange, and we wouldn't be faced with the problems we have now. And this is a problem with just one bridge across the highway, the next bridge is a Colo Bridge, uh, Colo Waterworks Road, uh, interchange, um, and it's very difficult to get there from Carrollay and Chuar, you basically have to you know, interfere with the lives of people that live in tiny, narrow bitumen roads connecting the suburbs, and that's going to be that way for quite some time by the sounds of it, so mayor, I fully support your amendments and I just hope it has the desired result.
Thank you, and the comments, um, so just chatting in the morning two room, I obviously when it happened and the Minister for TMR came out on the Saturday, and I discussed with him that what our residents don't want is, is to say, and I'm just picking these timeframes, to say it's two years to fix up the Bremmer River Bridge, and then next is the interchange, and noting that that interchange is not really an upgrade to what's there, it's a brand new road, a brand new interchange, and that our residents don't want that, and he certainly gave me that advice to you know, when I said to him I was going to come to him to discuss this, um, he said, make sure you ask the Australian Government as well, because they're fifty fifty, and so both state and the feds have, you know, fully funded both projects, um, but it's a matter of changing their spend profile to bring the money forward, so we have to do that both, so I think with our advocacy efforts, it's where we need to, um, to go as well. So no, thank you very much for bringing it forward, councillor Madden. All right, for any other commentary? Um, councillor Madden is the mover, do you wish to say anything in closing? Okay, okay, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Now move on to item fifteen point two, which is the report of the Finance and Governance Committee of the twentieth May twenty twenty five. Um, councillor Tully is the chair of that committee, how would you like that report managed?
Thank you, mayor, I'll move that the Finance and Governance Committee uh, report number two oh two five, brackets oh four of the twentieth of May twenty twenty five be received, and the recommendations contained there and be adopted.
Thank you so much, uh, seconded by councillor Doyle. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to the?
Yeah, it's just briefly on two matters, item two, which is something unusual, doesn't come up very often, it's a proposed agreement for lease for two park areas in the dress circle at Brookwater. Um, the recommendation from the officers, which the councillors have, um, uh, supported um, is that the application by the body corporate for the Brookwater Dress Circle Home Owners Club be approved for these two areas, um, for a period of twenty-one years, this enables them to the homeowners' club to take responsibility for the upkeep maintenance um, of those parks for that period of time, usually to a higher standard than council does. There is a financial incentive for council and, um, and the homeowners' club, council has a normal obligation in those areas, and there's a financial basis for this recommendation. The last time we've done this was about ten years ago, and those leases were for a period of, um, sixty years. So, um, this is just an opportunity to, to enable the embellishment of those parks beyond a council's normal standards, which is what we would offer and be able to do in the usual circumstances, so it's not a groundbreaking recommendation, but it is, um, I guess it's important to the Brookwater community, and we're recommending the adoption of that. In relation to item four on page ninety-five, that's the adoption of the fees and charges for twenty-five uh, two oh two five, two oh two six. Um, people sometimes think this is part of the formal budget adoption process, which is a few weeks away. There's hundreds of charges which councillors have been involved with, um, and I know most councillors have spoken to the heads of departments, there are no significant increases. Um, in the report, there's an indication of an average of about four point six percent. Um, this affects the budget in the sense that the money's raised through the fees and charges, um, can be quite significant um, across all areas of council, and we need to monitor, ensure that the charges are appropriate, generally in line with inflation, or there might be some other cost pressures which require the council to increase those charges a bit more. The difference between the budget and the fees and charges annually is that the fees and charges can be changed at any time, whereas the budget, once adopted, is in place for a period of twelve months, so I'd recommend the entire report to the council.
Thank you very much, councillor Doyle. As a second, do you wish to comment on the report? No, are you opening up for other discussion? No, um, I'll just speak to item four as well, which is the proposed fees and charges from the first of July, and when you go through that report, about two thirds of the fees listed are purely cost recovery fees, and one of the most notable ones to impact our community is the fee to use our recycling and refuse centre, centres. Um, council pays a state government waste levy, as all councils in Queensland do, on every tonne it sends to landfill, and that cost is going up ten dollars per tonne every single year for every council, and anyone who uses the landfill. And the current levy that we get from the state government, whilst when this levy was set, councils were not supposed to be any worse off, that rebate is also decreasing, so it's decreasing, I think, from eighty-five percent down to seventy percent, so it's a fifteen percent decrease, so it's a double whammy. As a direct result of the levy rise, when disposing of waste at Riverview or Rosewood Refuge and Recycling Centres, the first five hundred kilos of waste for Ipswich residents will increase from eighteen dollars to twenty-one dollars, and as from those figures, just the pure cost of the levy, let alone the transport and staff, um, that, that figure of twenty-one dollars is heavily subsidised, nowhere near goes to cover the costs, and the rate payers are subsidising that tremendously. As many now community struggle through the cost of living crisis, council has implemented a pensioner reduction of twenty percent for the very first time, and I think the council for that compassion. Um, pensioners will pay seventeen dollars to dispose of their general waste and eleven dollars to dispose of their green waste. Um, as many council fees listed in this report are at or below cost recovery, price increases are reflective of an increase in the, the cost delivery to rate payers. Do we have any other discussion? Councillor Tully is the mover, do you have anything else you'd like to mention?
Thank you for that insight, and that is true, it's become a millstone around a lot of councils and people's necks, really, this you know, waste, um, costs, you know, for the community, it's forever rising, and I know the, on the policy executive of the LGAQ, this matter has arisen. I'm still confident there may be some way in which this
I'm still confident there may be some way in which this can be ameliorated because the costs have to be passed on by councils. And, uh, it's become, uh, an ever increasing burden, uh, and, and debt, you know, for our individuals in the community.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We're now moving on to item fifteen point three, the report of the Community and Support Committee of the twentieth of May. Um, I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, councillor Madden. How would you like this report managed?
Um, sorry, uh, Chair, Chair, can't shake a cough from a couple of weeks ago. Um, I, uh, moved that the, uh, uh, recommendations occur as per the committee.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second to? Thank you councillor Doyle. Um, do you wish to speak to?
Yeah, I'll provide, um, um, some commentary. Um, for me, the highlight was the, uh, report we received on the Active and Healthy Programme for the twenty twenty four calendar year. Um, the officers are putting in a great deal of work to ensure greater public participation in that programme and I commend them for their efforts. And, um, use that as just an opportunity to, um, you know, once again restate that it's wonderful what council's done at the now named Goodna Community Centre. Um, it was great to be at the opening of that with councillor Tully, uh, deputy mayor Johnic and a few other elected reps. Um, that's going to be a hub of active and healthy programming for the community. And, um, it's, it's great to see people in, um, the great suburb of Goodna have, um, access to those sorts of programmes. And, um, I invite you all to attend some of those programmes and promote them to the broader Ipswich populace because the Goodna Community Centre is a wonderful building and, um, we can put it to good use through, through what the offices have designed.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle is the second to do, you wish to speak to it? Thank you. Um, I'd just like to speak to two reports. One is the, um, Active and Healthy Programme Annual Evaluation. It does show that our community does benefit from council's Active and Healthy Programme. And in twenty twenty four, the Active and Healthy Programme had a total participation of twenty nine thousand five hundred and forty nine. And the programme featured forty regular weekly activities, eighteen nutrition workshops and a hundred and thirty one active kids' school holiday sessions, which included, uh, learn to ride sessions. The participant survey came back with an average rating of four point three six out of five stars, which is a massive, uh, um, tick of approval, with most people saying they felt they had improved physical and mental health as a result. Uh, many also told us that having the vast majority of these being offered as free classes was very positive and many participants developed new friendships by attending the sessions. And I also note too that council has a preference for when they're doing this and contracting any of that out that for local suppliers as well. So anyone who has a business in Ipswich, there's a way that you can tap into council to, to be that provider. Um, in regards to community funding and the item three, which is the Community Funding and Support Allocation Status Report. For the first quarter of this year, council approved forty five applications totaling over a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars for a variety of community events and projects. There were many like the Anzac Day Services, supported with, along with the community events such as the Greater Springfield Community Festival, the one hundred and thirtieth Queensland Estedford, the one hundred and fiftieth Year Anniversary of the Rosewood United Church, which was held just last Sunday, and many more. Council discretionary funds contributed to the celebration of Indigenous players and the history hosted at Brothers Football Club, a wifi weather station for Marsden Sports Complex and to replace the, um, flood damage goals at Ipswich Night Soccer Club, to mention but a few. Uh, so it's great work to see that happening. Any other discussion or comments, uh, councillor Augustine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too just want to commend the officers for the report they did, especially item two, the evaluation, um, for the two thousand and twenty four calendar year. You did point out the good, um, findings from that survey. Um, yes, and one of the things was that it was free. So that's always good for our community. Um, and also there's, um, areas for us to improve on, which is great. We don't just, um, sit there and think that everything's wonderful. So they, they can, there's a couple of things that they can work on, which I'm sure that the staff will take these recommendations on for the next, um, year. Um, yes, so great to see that report. And also, um, I must, um, say the Sports and, um, Rec Advisory Committee, it was a very good, um, meeting, it was very robust. The information that, um, the officers provided, um, was great to see where all of our sports clubs land, uh, where they're sitting. So when us as councillors want to, um, engage with our sports clubs, we know exactly, um, who they are and, and, um, yeah, what they're about. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, councillor Augustine. Any other discussion? Councillor Madden, oh, s- Anything else as a mover? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We're now moving to item, um, fifteen point four, the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee of the twentieth of May, twenty twenty five. Uh, councillor Augustine is the Chair of this committee. How would you like this report managed?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move, um, the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, number two thousand and twenty five, uh, dash O four of the twentieth of May, two thousand and twenty five, be received and adopted in full.
Thank you. Do I have a second to? Thank you councillor Doyle. Councillor Augustine, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, Mayor, I would. Um, in particular, item two, um, again, it was great to attend, um, the opening of Anytime Fitness, um, the greenhouse therapies. Um, and there was also a good range of marketing initiatives that took place, um, that supported our Easter, um, celebrations in the, in the, in, um, in our Nicholas Street precinct. I also met, um, the Easter Bunny, which was great at the time. Um, then update to the media display on Torma Walk façade to support events and activations. Um, that was, that's something that was a highlight as well and foot traffic during the Easter activation, uh, period. Um, we've seen an increase there as well. Um, I must say it was great to see, um, us being selected as, as a finalist in the National, uh, Regeneration Development of the Year and Best Public Building and Social Infrastructure. Don't know what happened with that, but it's great that we were finalists. Um, yeah, and the precinct, um, did seem, as I said, um, increased visitor, uh, visitation. Um, in item three, the, the Public Arts Advisory Group, I must commend them for doing a great job in narrowing down the list. Um, they had one hundred and thirteen projects submitted, um, when the expressions went live in February. We, we, this project has been on a very tight timeline and I commend the, um, the staff and the advisory group for getting these two down for two down, uh, the, the applications down to two. So, and they look like great, um, applications. And, um, the other one was, I must say, the advisory, um, commi, uh, a committee that we had. I thought that was a very good committee. It was robust, everyone had input, everyone felt like they were heard. And we got some really good outcomes, Mayor, but I'll leave that because you chair that, uh, committee. I'll leave the rest to you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Doyle as the second to, do you wish to speak to this?
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I concur with, um, councillor Augustine's comments. I'd just like to highlight, um, a recent event that councillor Augustine and I attended. That was, um, last week, the grazing table, um, put on by, uh, the Ipswich Chamber of Commerce. Um, it's obviously, um, a very important partnership we have with the local chamber. Um, the particular event was, um, an after five event and we had a number of local, uh, suppliers and, and artisans, um, bring in some true culinary delights for us all to experience. Um, importantly, we did hear from, um, the guest speaker, which was Melanie Anderson. She's a general manager, manager for Strategy and Advocacy Queensland Tourism Industry Council. Um, and just a few key takeaways from, um, Melanie's discussion, um, was, you know, one around events and, um, her comment really stuck with me that, um, events drive local economies. Um, they are so important, um, to our, you know, um, our local economies and more importantly, um, supporting our local businesses. So some of the key, um, facts that she called out, um, total visitor expenditure in Ipswich, um, for the year end, June twenty twenty four, three hundred and ninety six million dollars, um, which was the highest ever recorded for our city. Um, and she, she talked about major events like twenty twenty four, uh, C M C Rocks. Um, the festival alone generated sixty five thousand, um, visitors and they contributed to fourteen million dollars to our local economy. So, um, again, events are, um, and a, an important part of our, um, local economy here and to support our local businesses. So I know we're going to budget discussions and, um, like all local governments, um, our, our, um, budgets, um, are tight and constrained, but we must not lose sight of, um, just how important the events are to our local economy. And we got to Padalama.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Um, I put for other discussion. Um, I was going to speak to item, um, three and then the Advocacy Advisory Committee. Um, I'm through this S E Q City Deal Public Art Initiatives. Uh, Ipswich City Council has been allocated eight hundred and ten thousand dollars through the S E Q City Deal Public Art Initiative, which will fund the cost of delivering both projects, concept development and project management. This is part of the larger ten million dollars for the South East Queensland City Deal Public Art Initiative, which is part of the S E Q City Deal between the Australian Government, the Queensland Government, the Council of Mayors, which was formally signed off in twenty twenty two. So it's great to see this come to fruition. Um, council received a hundred and thirty expressions of interest with thirty three of those involving artists with strong connection, uh, to Ipswich. It looks to me and, and from what I can see, it was a very fair and open and transparent process. The Public Art Advisory Group met to determine, um, recommended projects and locations after a two thousand dollar tender public art commission was supported for thirteen projects. So I think the Public Art Advisory Group for their time and their efforts and their consideration, um, as people who are experts in this field. We have a thriving arts and creative scene here in Ipswich. Um, and it's great to have them looking at this as well. I think the community really embraced the two projects that are being submitted for funding. I wish to speak to item four, which is the Advocacy Advisory Committee, which was held on the eighth of May. And we had a robust discussion regarding the federal election and the commitments we secured for Ipswich from both major parties. Uh, there were nineteen election commitments were made in the seat of Blair, seven from the A L P and twelve from the L N P, just over two hundred million dollars from both. But probably the most notable one was that commitment of two hundred million dollars to upgrade the Ambly interchange from both major parties. And that's the first time that that's happened. So it was, it's kind of what we're always, that's the nirvana that we're always looking for when we, we go to an election is having both major parties support that. Um, we discussed in that meeting how might be the best way to go forward so council could continue to build our advocacy. Whilst it's federal, with federal funding, we do need money from the state government as well. Um, we also discussed that we will be having three elections in twenty twenty eight, so it's a little bit of a different cycle. Uh, the council elections will be in March, the federal election sometime before May and then the state election in October. So we discussed how we would advocate, noting that we don't have that election cycle between them. And we looked at different times such as the budget cycles, the, the mid-year cycles, um, to maximize funding, et cetera. Again, I know I sound like a broken record, but councils only receive three percent of all taxpayers' funding. We cannot, um, you know, we, we don't have the authority or the funding to build the infrastructure that we need. Um, also a highlight of that is that, um, um, councillor Martin has asked to, to join that particular group as well. So today we'll be voting on that. I've asked, um, the organisation to give, um, quite detailed, um, minutes. So you will see that we went through quite a few things. So, um, yourself but also residents can see the progress of certain, um, projects. Um, and also what, what, what focus, um, that we'll recommend to council. In regards to the fact that we don't, we have three elections in twenty twenty eight, we were looking at the advice that we'd had from advocacy professionals and they gave five points for us to, or five principles for us to follow. And that is, phrases of counsel that have a common purpose, coordinated communications, a unity of voice, engaging all appropriate channels and systemic record keeping and following up on all our advocacy asks as well. I won't go into each of the advocacy asks in there because that's, that's listed, um, in there. And, but we also looked at how we would update, um, look at updating locally significant projects in the future, whether we add the clay courts at Likeheart, John Street at Rosewood, as well as, um, councillor Doyle's notice of motion on the Tartan Track as well. I don't have anything else to, does anyone else have any other discussions? Yep, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Thank you. We're now moving on to item fifteen point five, which is the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee on the twentieth of May, twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, councillor Madden. How would you like this report managed?
The councillor, oh, thank you. As Chair of the Environment Sustainability Committee, I move that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee, number two thousand and twenty five O four of twenty May, uh, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, do I have a second to for that? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Councillor Madden, do you wish to speak to the report?
Well, uh, Mayor, um, there were no reports in, in my report, only the minutes. Um, I'd, I'd hope you'd give me leave to talk about the Connecting Corridors Forum that you and I attended.
Absolutely.
Yes, good, thank you, Mayor. That's all I just needed, the green light. Um, on Sa- Saturday, the twenty fourth of May, two thousand and twenty five, uh, the Mayor and I were very fortunate to attend the Connecting Corridors Forum at Hidden Vale, which is sponsored by the Little Liverpool Range Initiative, the Queensland Trust for Nature, the Turner Family Foundation and the Ipswich City Council. Uh, Chair was our own, uh, Philip Smith, and, um, the Mayor gave the welcome, welcoming address. Keynote speaker, Mayor, was, uh, Dr David Watson, who is an expert on mistletoe. And, uh, he's done a lot of research on mistletoe. And one of the things he found out is that if you want a healthy forest, you must have healthy mistletoe. And it's interesting, a number of the, uh, presenters talked about interplanting mistletoe on trees, which I'd never heard of before. I mean, basically get the seed, it's pretty sticky. You get up there on the branch and you, it pretty much attaches itself. But they've done a lot of studies and they've found that the, um, both animal and plant flora is very much improved in direct correlation to the amount of mistletoe on the trees. Um, we also heard from Natalia Mates. Uh, she's, she's, uh, running ongoing PhD with regard to brush tail rock wallabies. I think it's from about Bundaberg through to Kosciusko. So it's a huge area she's been covering. Uh, we heard from Dr Kate Dutton Register and she spoke about echidna. And, um, the ama, uh, uh, just as a matter of interest, uh, echidnas, uh, are born as an egg. Um, I can't remember the, I can't remember the name of the technical term. Monotrend, yes. Um, but they appear on our five cent piece and the egg is almost exactly the same size of the five cent piece. And, uh, I think that was just fortuitous. I don't think anyone ever planned that. And it's, and it's only relatively recent that a s- a scientist has determined the gestation period for an echidna. I won't go into the complexity of, uh, echidna being born, but they're fascinating. And, uh, Dr Kate Dutton Register is, uh, running a sort of an online, um, survey where they're trying to keep track of, uh, echidnas. We know they're found, Mayor, we know they're found from the deserts through to the coast, all over the place, but we don't know their numbers. And unfortunately, one of the way, way that we're monitoring their numbers is deceased echidnas on roads. I had to pull one off the road in front of Car, uh, um, uh, in, at Carabin just recently. They kind of are moving around at the present time. The, another speaker was, uh, Professor Shane Campbell, who spoke about pasture management and how to health, have healthy pasture. All of those three speakers are, are all professors or PhDs, um, or students from, um, um, University of Queensland Gatton Campus, which is the university I attended. Now, by contrast of that, they had laypeople speaking and there were two landowners at, uh, Telagalla, Mick Drews and Marina Whitechurch. And both of those people are trying to restore their property at, uh, Telagalla, back to, similar to how it would be when the, uh, Rosewood scrub existed, which was a unique form of plant life and, uh, biology that ran from Rosewood to Lowood. And, um, it's interesting because, um, Marina Whitechurch is following, uh, what you might call a philosophy that Queensland Trust for Nature follows. And that is, they don't want to lock off, um, parkland from cattle. They want land that where they can have, uh, stock, but also preserve the bushland and the, in the range land. Whereas Mick Drews, when he bought his property, the first thing that they did was get rid of the cattle and he's very pleased that they did so. There was a panel discussion afterwards, but it was, it was a very informative day. And, um, the, uh, Hidden Vale were perfect hosts on the day. And if anyone wants to have a nice day out, Hidden Vale's a pretty good place to go, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. You must have stayed the whole day.
I did.
And councillor Madden, I could only stay for the, yeah. And I'll concur that Professor David Watson was, was, uh, a very engaging speaker.
Hmm.
And you'd know what I do, but obviously a mistletoe is a parasite.
Yeah.
And one of the benefits it does is that when it does shed its leaves, being a parasite, it's happy to shed its leaves while it's still full of nutrients. So it's wholly sought after in the leaf matter of woodlands. It was very interesting.
It was. It was fascinating. I thought it was, I thought it was a pest, mayor, but it's really a synergy between mistletoe because it attracts insects that are beneficial to the tree.
Yeah. And I think that was the last event for the Exploring Nature Programme that the Environment Sustainability Team have run this year. And I think our next event will be the Sustainability Month when we have that, especially more of the month as well. So it's, yeah, great work to see. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point six, which is the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the fourteenth of May, twenty twenty five. So I'll move that council adopt the recommendations of the Audit and Risk Management Committee. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Antonelli. If you wish to speak to it as you're a member of that committee?
I'm just wondering whether we can amend, I know it's just a receiving a note, but I'd like to add another recommendation that we thank as a council. We thank Dr Anne Quail for her involvement in the asset, sorry, Audit and Risk Management Committee over the last seven years. She stood down at the last committee due to competing priorities. So we, I wasn't in attendance that day, I was an apology, but that was her last day working for us on the Audit and Risk Management Committee. But she has been with us some seven years assisting us in that regard. And I think we should, we should send a letter recognising that and thanking her for her seven years' involvement.
Yes, if it could be appropriately worded, that council formally thank, acknowledge her contribution and thank her for her contribution to the Audit and Risk Management Committee for the past seven years.
Thank you. As the mover, I'm happy for that amendment and obviously you're proposing it. So that's the recommendation before us is A and B?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll just wait for it to be ready so you could all read it. May I write, Vicky? Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put recommendation A and B, sorry, I just watched both up on the screen so you can read them. I'll put recommendations A and B to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item sixteen point sixteen, which is the office's report. So sixteen point one is the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for April twenty twenty five. I believe you wish to make a minor amendment to page one thirty nine. Okay, CEO?
I do, mayor. Thank you very much and with apologies.
So on the bottom table of page one thirty nine?
Yeah, one thirty nine of two forty one, there's a reference to an FAQ being updated to confirm councillors now sending garden organics to Remondus instead of Newgrow. That should in fact correctly read that from one July or from July twenty twenty five. Council will be sending garden organics to Remondus instead of Newgrow. So I'll make sure that that's corrected in the records.
Any objections to that?
Apologies, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
And councillor, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the report? I will move it. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Martin. In speaking to the report, thank you, CEO, the council's post cyclone clean-up hit another milestone with more than three tonnes of rubbish and debris removed from Ipswich waterways. The cleanup efforts were focused on parts of the Brisbane River and the Bremmer River with collection boats launching from Richardson Park at Goodne to access these reaches. The cleanup retrieved items including wheelie bins, building materials, irrigation pipes, mattresses, white goods, car tyres and polystyrene. I also see that we have a new contract in place to commence in July for our green waste. And this sixty seven million dollar investment is another way that council can play a part in reducing waste odours in Ipswich and moving to a more bespoke green waste only facility women councils, low odor materials are not contributing or associated with any odor issues as well as, probably importantly, two matters, the fact that we will be reducing what is sent to landfill, but also it'll be reducing, whilst the waste levy will be going up everywhere in Queensland, the waste levy won't be going up as much because we'll be paying more money for landfill. We've also received three point eight million dollars in grant funding to provide a detailed application for the Ipswich Central Urban Greening Project from the federal government. And this will be more shade, green spaces and trees in the corridors, joining the hospital, council, train station and North Ipswich Sports and Entertainment Precinct. And we've also received ninety thousand dollars in grant funding to extend our illegal dumping partnership. And this funding supports an additional compliance officer who will specifically work on illegal dumping issues. I'll open up any other comments or discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item sixteen point two, which is the Q three annual plan, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, quality performance report. Any questions on the report? No, I'll move it. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on this? I guess it's the second last one for the financial year and we've had a very wet start to the year and the report is reflecting that, that in the delays that weather has caused and council having the ability to work through its capital delivery programme. And that's something I think councillor Antonelli mentioned as well in his report. But it's worth noting that while it continues to be behind schedule, it's not forecasted to be significantly over budget. We have welcomed six hundred and seventy four people to the community development workshop and facilitated thirty four cross-community meetings. And council-run events have given the city an economic boost of eleven million dollars in the past quarter. And there were two thousand seven hundred and fifteen visitor inquiries at the Visit Information Centre and one point eight million visitors to our city. Our community has continued to embrace our bin app, which lets people know exactly when their bins are going to be collected as well. I think we've had over sixty thousand downloads on that app in the last quarter alone. Any other discussion on the report? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Sixteen point three is the Queensland Audit Office twenty twenty five First Interim Audit Report. Are there any questions on the report? No, I'll move the report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We're now going to a supplementary report. Do I have to leave a motion for it to be as a late report? Let's double check.
Yes, you will.
Yeah. Do you have the recommendation there? I'll move that the late report, sixteen point four, the update on the healthy land and water membership be considered as a late report to our council. I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Any discussion? No. Okay, in that case, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous. Thank you so much. And sixteen point four is now on the agenda. Sixteen point four, update healthy land and water membership has two recommendations for us to pick either A or B. And that is that council A adopts the recommendation as presented in its original form in the office's report, the fifteenth of October. And I'm just reading that. That recommendation. Pardon me. That recommendation that council's membership of healthy land and water be held over to a future council meeting to allow council in consultation, which I think we've done. My apologies. The recommendation, sorry, I can just see that. I'll start again. Recommendation A is that council adopts the recommendation as presented in its original form in the office's report, the fifteenth of October, twenty twenty four, being that council resolved to cease its membership of healthy land and water and no longer make the annual membership payment. Or B, that should recommendation A not be adopted, that council pays its healthy land and water membership for twenty four, twenty five and reviews its ongoing membership for twenty five, twenty six, following the outcomes of the state government review of the regional water quality monitoring programme due by December twenty twenty five. So I'll move recommendation A. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Thank you. In speaking to this, our city is investing more in our waterways today than we ever have before. The health of our catchment and waterways is a priority and we are in partnership contributing about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the council of mayors SEQ Resilient Rivers Initiative and spend three hundred thousand dollars for the Ipswich River Improvement Trust. And we will invest a further one million dollars on our urban rivers project. If we continue with the healthy land and water membership, we'll be funding six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars to third parties that conduct waterway management as well as investing over one million dollars as a council. This recommendation from officers is that we do cease the membership. And for me, it's not because, and the reason for that is because it won't have an impact on the environment because the work that is happening is already happening. We're already, Healthy Land and Water already contracted to do this work and there's no reason to or no value or benefit to continue the membership. I acknowledge the council officers' work. They have done the due diligence and are recommending that we cease this payment, which I think is over a hundred thousand dollars, for the benefit of the Ipswich rate payer at no loss to our collaboration with Healthy Land and Water. So all their projects with them now and in the future can continue due to the work that we do with them, with Comsec and other projects. Irrespective of the annual membership contribution, council continues to work with healthy land and water on a case-by-case project basis, delivering outcomes such as waterway stabilisation projects, coiled tree plantings and fire management workshops as part of the regional fire and biodiversity consortium. We would still continue to receive a yearly report card on the health of the region regardless of our membership status. With all this considered, I don't know why we would continue to just do what we've always done and spend rate payer's money on a membership when there are no tangible environmental outcomes or value for money. I'll open it up for other councillors. Do you wish to speak to it as a second? Councillor Tully, yeah?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. I don't support the recommendation. We had a briefing this week, which I thought was very informative about the role which is played through this programme, which I think is a benefit to our city, particularly that we are a city that has two rivers, the Bremmer and Brisbane River, which flow through our city. And if the motion is not carried, I have a foreshadowed motion, which I will indicate now, which has been given to the committee clerk. And if that could be displayed, I won't speak to that second motion now, but I'll just say that I'm not supportive of this first motion. And that is that it's slightly different from paragraph B, so that would be a separate motion.
I was going to go to B if this didn't get up.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it's just the way, it's a bit odd. The, even the opening words of paragraph B are a little bit odd. If we were going to adopt B, you know, as printed, you wouldn't have the first five or six words in that recommendation. But I'll propose that if A is not carried, and it wouldn't be paragraph B, it'd be a motion in its own right. So I'd ask that the reference to B be the, that's correct, that council pays its healthy land and water membership for twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six and review its ongoing membership for twenty six, twenty seven and beyond, following the outcomes of the state government review of the regional water quality monitoring programme due by December twenty five.
Thank you. So that will be a foreshadowed motion?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you so much. Speaking to the motion A before us, noting that councillor, I may ask, what is your view, the fact that we've had the recommendation that the membership is not providing any other environmental benefits or value for money for rate payers?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure that that is correct. The fact of the matter was that we were provided with significant information of the collaboration and what they are providing to the city of Ipswich, but we're not paying for it. And I think as a local government, there'd be no reason. We haven't withdrawn our membership. It's thirty days or so before the end of the financial year and the money probably should have already been paid. This gives us an opportunity, of course, both in the proposed B and in my motion as a foreshadowed motion, there is a review going on, which is due by the end of this year. And that will be an opportunity to review the matter in the ordinary course of events.
Just a matter of note, Ipswich City Council does pay for the work that they do. You made some note that they were conducting work that we don't pay for, but that would be, that's not the advice that I've received, that they are, that council is paying healthy land and water through other mechanisms.
Well, other councillors can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the indication was that they were providing work, just this week, that they were providing, you know, in their briefing, they were doing work, but we hadn't been paying them. That was my interpretation of what was said.
Councillor Doyle?
Chair, may we potentially ask some questions of the relevant councillor officer, if not the CEO?
I'll ask the CEO in the first instance, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, councillor Doyle?
Thank you, CEO. Yeah, I just want to clarify, obviously the mayor's comments alongside councillor Tully's. Are we paying for those services?
If I just draw from the report through the, through the chair to council and referring back to the briefing that councillors were provided, in the report, it indicates that we continue to work with healthy land and water on a case-by-case project basis, noting those projects referenced around waterway stabilisation projects, coiled tree plantings and the others that were listed in the briefing. So the healthy land and water receives grants from the state and federal government that fund these and from their own sources. So they've not actually asked us for any funding for those. The membership substantially goes towards the regional water quality monitoring programme. So taking into account council's membership payments over the past couple of decades or so, we've contributed two point two million dollars already to the regional healthy water monitoring programme. And I guess our position as an organisation and mine as the CEO is that despite that very significant investment of rate payer's money over those years, it's not made any real material impact on the health of the waterways in Ipswich. So our, it is with not, no malice that we make this recommendation. We make it simply providing the best possible professional advice that we can to you as a council in terms of that investment. The annual membership, as I understand it, as I'm advised, essentially substantially is for that monitoring programme. And like other councils, as noted in the report, we, in all good conscience, would recommend that that money is spent elsewhere, such as we presented on local water quality monitoring programmes, where we could make, in our professional opinion again, a more tangible difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I also note that I think it was, I think the actual councils were named in the briefing session, but that our neighbouring councils have also decided to step back from membership because of the fact that, of the value for money process that we already engage them in other activities on a case-by-case basis.
Just the point of order, ma'am, can you name those specific councils? Because my understanding is there's still a number of neighbouring councils who are members.
But you were in the briefing session?
I was with you at the conference, ma'am.
Yes.
Were you at the briefing session?
No, I wasn't.
So I'm just asking, you've, you've made a blanket statement that our neighbouring councils are not members. So I'm just wondering if you can name them.
I'm reading from the report. A few neighbouring councils have already planned to step back from making the annual membership contribution. So that's what I state. And I understand, I was told that at the briefing session, that some of the names of those councils were discussed, is what I've been informed. I don't know if it's confidential or not, so that's why I haven't named them. It might be confidential, I don't know. So I wasn't going to name it because it wasn't in the briefing pack. It's not in the papers.
So that blanket statement's not quite accurate, is that what?
I'm reading from the report, a few neighbouring councils.
A few, yes.
Yeah. I do know that names are some, but they may be confidential, I don't know. I do know that names are some, but they may be confidential, I don't know. Yes.
Excuse me, ma'am, was it the briefing? Could we just have confirmation whether it was confidential? Because if it wasn't, I'm happy to name councils.
I'll have to see.
Ask the CEO.
I'll have to ask the CEO.
I don't believe it was a confidential document, because I actually raised questions about it.
Just checking with the team, as I understand it, the Healthy Land and Water website does list members. But whether it's completely up to date, it might be another matter, because the CEO of Healthy Land and Water did indicate, you know, that there's some movement. But look, I think it's sufficiently on the record that Brisbane City Council has not renewed its membership for the similar reasons that I outlined a moment ago. All the advice is not to name them specifically. Whoops, there you go.
I think we'll ask.
And there's another, perhaps I'll just say another major SEQ, sorry, two other major SEQ regions have also ceased the membership payment, again on similar grounds.
Okay.
Chair, if I may, can we go into closed session, please? Because I do have some questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll move that in accordance with section 254 J3. G, negotiation relating to a commercial event involving the local government, which a public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government, that we move into closed session. Do I have a second for that, councillor Doyle? Thank you. Put that to the vote, those in favour? Everyone but councillor Augustine? Sorry, unanimous. We're now in closed session.
Thank you. Welcome back. It is eleven fifty seven. We were in closed session to discuss some matters that we were looking at that may be more sensitive than confidential. So, welcome back. I'll now open it up for discussion on matters that are able to be spoken here now.
Thank you Chair. I don't feel I have enough information to make a decision today, but I absolutely accept and respect that my fellow colleagues may do. But should people agree with, should councils agree with me, I move that we lay the matter on the table and then deal with it urgently to get that additional information and work with Healthy Land and Waterways just around that payment date so that if we do exceed it, the ability is still there to pay the membership.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mayor, can I just ask, is it B that we're looking at, that one?
No, A.
That's A, okay.
You go to A.
And if A doesn't get across, sorry Mayor, if A doesn't get across, we go to B?
We go to the foreshadowed motion.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes. I guess in the closed session, there was some discussion and I would like to see if I ask the council officer to come in and talk to us about some of the matters that were raised that are not confidential, just so the residents or the public can hear.
Certainly, Mayor.
Probably on the changes in the model for Healthy Land and Water.
In the constitution.
What we pay for, what's included, what's not included and just be really open about that.
This cabinet is coming forward.
Thank you.
Good morning Mayor, councillors. Kay Cavanagh, General Manager, Environment Sustainability.
Thank you, Miss Cavanagh. Sorry, in that closed session, you worked through some of the history of Healthy Land and Water and how it's changed. Do you mind outlining that for us, for residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, when Healthy Land and Water were established or as Healthy Waterways, back in the mid nineties, it was a collaboration of councils across South East Queensland to look at the health of Moreton Bay and then it later expanded to the surrounding catchments, noting that catchments have an influence on Moreton Bay. At the time, a lot of water utilities had requirements to monitor the health of the waterways and they were all part of councils at that particular point in time. And it was established as a partnership, so all councils contributed towards that regional partnership being Healthy Waterways. Over time, that has changed with amalgamation with SEQ catchments and then later being considered the NRM body for South East Queensland. More recently, last couple of years, I haven't got the exact year in mind, but they did change their constitution and are much more of a fee-for-service commercial entity. A lot of councils and utilities still contribute towards the regional water quality monitoring program, but it's not necessarily a partnership in which it was originally established.
Thank you, Miss Cavanagh. We also talked about the fact that is it a membership fee and has that sort of changed? Do you mind explaining that?
It's probably a little nuanced and we might need to just get some advice and come back in regards to how that's being presented by Healthy Land and Water. But under the constitution, local governments aren't recognised as a member, so to speak, in that constitution.
Okay. I guess there was discussion in closed session again about if council doesn't, it's a hundred fifteen thousand dollars, would that impact the organisation negatively? You know, would that affect our neighbours who utilise Healthy Land and Water?
I wouldn't be able to speak to how it would impact our neighbours specifically. As far as the organisation, Healthy Land and Water, we're a small contributor into their overall revenue source and the programme, the ecosystem health monitoring programme would continue irrespective of our small contribution, is our understanding.
If this, I won't call it membership, but if this invoice, what it is, the hundred fifteen thousand dollars isn't paid, what would council not get? So, I'm trying to work out what the value is or the benefit to council of this payment.
Yeah, we had a briefing from the CEO of Healthy Land and Water earlier this week. As far as some of the things that she mentioned was, you know, being a seat at the table in regards to decisions around that water quality monitoring programme. So currently, we have representatives that sit on the working group for the ecosystem health monitoring programme. I suspect without the payment, we wouldn't actually sit on that working group moving forward. But we would still have a lot of engagement with them through all of the other programmes, the clean-up programmes, fire biodiversity programmes and all the on-ground deliverables that we get involved in. All of those arrangements would still continue and I suspect the waterway health report card, as a regional report card, would still be delivered now on a every second year basis.
So, will we still have full access to the data from Healthy Land and Water?
The data is publicly available, so through their website.
And do they receive funding elsewhere for that?
The programme is co-contributed through the state government, water utilities and other councils.
So, we still have, okay. Thank you. Leave it open for any other questions. Yes, Councilor Tully.
What year was the constitution changed to from what we'd call full council membership?
Yeah, that's the one I would have to just check. I think it was about two or three years ago, but I'll just, I.
No, that's fine. Who was our voting representative up until then?
From, no, there was no voting, oh, voting member as in council officer was myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just note on their presentation the other day, they used the word network membership. Yeah, not just membership, they call it network membership. So, that's the subtlety of, I guess most councils would describe it as, yeah, membership. Yeah, as you've done in the, in the report that's with us today. Thank you. Can I just ask, what was the vote? If you're able to reveal that, was it just councils that had the vote and that was?
It would have been all, oh, now you're testing my memory. I'd have to go back, I think it was all contributing members that had a vote under the previous constitution and I think from memory voted in favour of the change, but I'd have to go back and confirm.
But was there any other persons, like any officers of the organisation or anyone else that had a vote?
Each organisation only has one vote, yes.
Of the councils. They were the only voting members, the councils, yeah. So, it must have been a majority of councils.
It would have been councils, like SEQ Water.
Is it one vote each or was it a portion vote based on your contribution?
One vote each, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much, Miss Cavanagh.
Thank you.
I do note Councilor Doyle's reticence, but I guess for the, this did come to council back in October last year, there has been a briefing session and I know not all of us were there due to other commitments and so on. I guess I have a preference to proceed unless someone's putting up a notice of motion to not. Councilor Augustine?
Sorry Mayor, I'm just looking at that and I really feel from where Councilor Doyle's coming from and then I've listened to everything as well. So, both of, even the foreshadowed motion, I'm feeling a little bit torn between them all. One because of, we're already June twenty five and if I was the organisation and, you know, that might have been budgeted for in their works, you know, there's money coming in, I think it's poor form that we don't pay that one. But then in saying that, if we don't approve the first one and then the foreshadowed motion comes through, I would feel the two thousand twenty five, twenty six not be paid straight away, that one should be reviewed.
Can I just check something, I think CEO, was our previous one just for one year? I think I've, so I think they knew that was a year-by-year basis.
Yeah, that's correct Chair.
Okay, so there was no expectation because we paid for one year?
I, without debating the foreshadowed motion, just indicate that the foreshadowed motion covers that situation that there won't be a report until December twenty-five and that we're halfway through the, that financial year and any consideration of that could take another few months, so we'd be well into next financial year and that was the purpose of my amendment, was it not to go to a three-year membership as some councils have, but just to cover this year with a month to go and for next year and then to review.
May I ask then, if you're looking at that, what have we, what value have we had, what services have they provided outside, outside what they've paid for by the state and federal governments? What value have they provided to us? So could you put your microphone on please?
In their presentation this week, they described their net, network membership as covering water by design programme, ecosystem health monitoring programme, ecosystem health report card, stewardship report, social monitoring programme, healthy water play, ecosystem modelling and compliance monitoring and brackets utilities. So they've covered a range of things and there'd be greater or lesser issues which would apply to Ipswich, but why I'm not supportive of it, just cancelling that and not paying that amount is what's been raised before in relation to nearby councils where we're part of the One Ecosystem, the Bremmer Brisbane River Catchment area and I think we really need to you know, indicate to neighbouring councils our commitment to this, there will be a review at the end of the year. That's an opportunity for us to stick with our, what's called network membership at this stage and then to review it in December or early in twenty twenty-six.
Could I just get confirmation from Ms Cavanagh, those projects that you said Healthy Land and Water said they do, are they funded by the state or federal government or they? Some of those sound like they were, just, they were do you mind outlining those, about six or seven programmes that sounded like councillor Tully? Do you mind listing those off again?
I'm aware of them, yeah, so primarily yes, they all are co-contributed across the state and other partners that contribute. A number of those are actually the one programme, so ecosystem health monitoring programme includes that stewardship report card, that's the alternate year report card that is put out as opposed to the rating for each waterway.
So would Healthy Land and Water have done some work that is of value to coun, that council should, do you think should have to pay for, I guess is what I'm asking, that's not covered by state or federal funding?
I'm not sure I'm quite understanding, sorry.
Of those programmes?
Yep.
It sounds like they're getting funding from the state and the federal governments for them. I guess I'm looking at what the value is, it's been the end of the, we're coming to the end of the financial year, I'm trying to work out what have we what, what benefit, what value does council have out of, that council should have to pay for when they're getting funded by the state and the federal governments to do this work? Happy to be corrected.
Sorry, I guess that's the overall question in regards to the contributions or contribute towards that grouping of projects. So, and at this stage we get involved in some of the conversations, so Healthy Water Play for example, which talks about interactions with waterways, we, we have been party to some of those comms development around that, so we would have still had party or privy to those conversations throughout the year.
Thank you Ms Cavanagh. Any other discussion? No, okay, then. Oh yes, sorry for your discussion, yes, thanks councillor Tully.
Well, Mayor, look, we stated earlier in the meeting that a number of our neighbouring councils were we're not members, but we have ascertained now that all but one of our adjoining councils remains a member of Healthy Water, Land and Water, which is a respected, reputable and independent body. Decades of data collection and assistance in cleaning and improving our waterways, the, I do recall finally the fact that Healthy Waterways used to assist with the cleaning of our river, doing patrols of our river and cleaning a number of litter and the like from the river, so they have been heavily involved in the past, no doubt will be in the future. Look, I've had feedback from many environmentally concerned residents that this looks bad for council to to walk away from our membership of Healthy Land and Water, particularly from an optics and perception perspective. But I also feel that considering the fact that the state is undertaking a review of these water quality monitoring programmes, that this appears quite premature for council to not pay our membership, the fact that we've gone eleven months into the financial year and not paid our fee doesn't look good for us either, truth be told. I do, I am concerned that by not being a member, we will not receive the level of data that we have in the past. Our opportunity to partner with Healthy Land and Water may also be reduced if we, even though they are now established as a fee-for-service organisation, our lack of membership might mean that that service may rise in price and we may not get that membership discount if that is what applies. And we may not see some of these activities continuing in our local government area. There's an opportunity here to value add with our own localised data by continuing our relationship with Healthy Land and Water. But I also see a bigger picture here, the relationships that we have with the organisation as well as the other small councils that surround us that remain members. We don't act in isolation as waterways, the waterways are part of a enormous network of rivers and creeks in South East Queensland. And each area, each local government area's waterways impacts the neighbouring. So they do flow from one into the other, so I see a bigger picture here in supporting this organisation and continuing our membership, particularly with our adjoining smaller councils. And that pretty much concludes my view on it, but I do feel it's premature considering there is a review.
Thank you, any other commentary? If I'll do a write of reply. Now, thank you for the conversation and just as a write a reply, just to make sure that we do have the facts out there, that there are three major SEQ councils who have not renewed or made this payment. And as has been discussed by council officers and has been reiterated, council still has access to all the data, it's paid for by other levels of government, so any any type of statement or any comments that our access to data will be restricted is refuted, that's not factually correct. And that has been put forward a number of times by council officers and any, any comments on that I would consider to be scaremongering. I think it's really important that we look at all the programmes, not just Healthy Land and Water. We look at Resilient Rivers Initiative, we look at here at the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust and the greater work that is done there. And most of the times Healthy Land and Water is used, is a supplier and will continue to do that. We've also had the council office explain that Healthy Land and Water has, you know, evolved and that's not unusual for an organisation. It went from being a membership-based organisation to being a more commercial one, so a fee-for-service is, is what they're at, so I'm sure that they would, you know, so that would be, so that's how council has engaged them in the past. We talk about reputation, I will say the fact that we've, we've seen that there is no additional value to council and I would say that it looks bad for our council to spend a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars during a cost of living crisis for an organisation that is now a commercial organisation, that we do hire as a supplier and to give that for no additional value, I think that is, that is that's not what we're being paid to do here, that we, we need to be very careful with how we spend ratepayers' money and I think that it's been shown here, the officers have recommended that there is not the value for money and that's what I'll be voting for in this particular. I now put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please, you raise your hand. Myself and councillor Augustine, those against councillor Madden, councillor Tully, councillor Antonelli, councillor Martin and councillor Madison. Those abstaining, councillor Doyle, thank you, so that did not pass. So we will now go to the foreshadowed motion and I'll just wait for Vicky to catch up with the voting. Thank you. So the motion that's here that councillor Tully has put forward is that council pays its Healthy Land and Water membership for twenty twenty-five and twenty-five twenty-six and review its ongoing membership for twenty-six, twenty-seven and beyond following the outcome of the state government review of the regional water quality monitoring programme due December twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second for that?
Well, I'm moving that.
Yeah, as I said, you've moved that.
Yeah, I'll move that.
So it's a foreshadowed motion, so yes, you've moved that.
Yeah, but I hadn't moved it when I foreshadowed it.
Oh, okay.
But I'm moving it now.
You're moving it now. Thank you, and I think councillor Martin, you had your hand up for the second, councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. I'll inevitably reasonably brief in relation to this, I think it's the wrong messaging if we don't continue our membership. We are an environmentally conscious city and we have two major river systems, which I mentioned previously, going through our city, the Brisbane and well, the mid Brisbane River and the Bremmer River of course. What's described as a network membership is important, certainly important to me and I believe my community, I think it's also important that we continue to support our neighbouring councils because it's that dual role that we play as the downstream, principally the downstream council that we're working together with them. For the, for this year, we're getting the benefit of membership in a way without making any payment whatsoever. It does concern me that that's possibly, yeah, sending the wrong message generally in South East Queensland. The General Manager Environment and Sustainability made the comment that the amount involved is only a small contribution, that were the comments that were made and I think it is. I think it's an important educational role and a practical role with Healthy, Healthy Land and Water provide. On their, in their presentation, and I'll just read what they described as the value of membership. It's cost-effective, valuable resources, training and networking, robust, independent, scientific integrity, essential to broader SEQ waterway management. And Ipswich community showing a strong interest in maintaining the partnership. And they say, we want Ipswich to be part of the future direction of the programme. And I know issues can be raised in relation to funding, with the fundings coming from the federal government and the state. The bottom line is that we're still a network member, or member in the usual vernacular and that we need to resolve that for this financial year. For next financial year and beyond, I haven't recommended that it go beyond to the three years, which a lot of councils are members for. But given the fact that there's going to be a review by the end of this year by the state government, we could, we should at least commit to next financial year and then have this debate probably early in twenty twenty-six, but I'd urge councillors to support this. Even councillors who voted against the general principle basically of getting out of it, there is a strong message that we need to send as a council involved in our environment, that we support our ongoing partnership, certainly at this stage, and I don't use that descriptor you know, to suggest that we are going to get out because that may be a matter, there might be other proposals put forward by the state government which is superior to the current arrangements. And I certainly would keep an open mind until that report is prepared by the end of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you councillor Martin, is the second, do you wish to speak to it?
I'll just concur with what's being said around the table, I agree with councillor Augustine, her earlier comments about the optics of potentially having a whole twelve months and not paying for it. And I also like the fact that we're open to what happens at the end of the review this year from the state government, which I'd like to think would be an independent body in terms of the role of the
Thank you, I'll continue to speak against it, you wish to?
Yeah. Thank you. Firstly Mayor, I just want the record to note that you made the comment that we were made aware of this in October last year and we've had a recent briefing. I'm not doubting or disputing any of that, I'm not talking about the information that I am privy to, I'm talking about information or views that have been expressed here today, that there is something else driving this decision and for that reason alone, that's why I abstained and will continue to abstain, I still feel very strongly, the matter should be laid on the table. As anyone who knows me knows that I am a big supporter and advocate for our local environment. But good governance is also important to me.
Thank you councillor Doyle. In speaking against this motion, I note that there's been discussion in regards to there was a feeling that if we didn't continue, we're letting down neighbours, just want to point out that the last annual report from Healthy Land and Waters had a revenue of seven point seven, over seven point seven million and we're talking about an invoice of, you know, of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It's also neglecting the fact that we do significant work, to say that we're not looking at our neighbours is disingenuous, we do an incredible amount of work with the Resilient Rivers Initiative. I'm a member on that board.
Just to point order, I wasn't saying we didn't work with our neighbours, I was just suggesting in my comments that we work with them, we continue to work with them.
And we do work with them, the Resilient Rivers Initiative, in fact, it's quite refreshing going to their board meetings and the Resilient Rivers Initiative board meetings, they actually list the projects that they're working on and how we're working together as councils with the Senate, with Lockyer, with our other neighbours in Somerset as well, so those programmes are very well established, as well as the good work that the Ipswich Rivers Improvement Trust do as well. You talked about, there was a discussion about value of membership, we still have access to all the data that is being produced because it is being paid for by another level of government, so there's no restriction to that, so I'll sit by the fact that I think during a cost of living crisis, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money and I haven't seen where we could add any value for that, so I'll be continuing to support the recommendation of the council offices. I'll open up for any other discussion, councillor Augustine?
Oh, thank you Mayor, I just want to clarify, I'm not going to be supportive of this motion as well. Only because I, I feel, I think we've missed something here and I should have clicked before. With one of our, with another council, and I don't know if we can say, I won't say their name, they've still left the door open, they're not paying it, but they've still left the door open and so that's what I would, would have liked to have see happen, that's why I'm going to vote this one down, yeah, against it, sorry, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes councillor Madison?
Yeah, some of the benefits that were discussed of continuing membership that you haven't expressed Mayor were benefits if the focus of the council is on a regional NRM being successful and being more involved with that and it remains my position that the value of Healthy Land and Water as a regional NRM has a lot of intangible benefits that are important. That's where my focus is and I can't have my vote swayed this morning by speculation about what other the councils are considering. What's currently the case is the councils above us in the catchment are maintaining their membership and any departure from an organisation such as this, I'd need to understand what consultation we've, we've had with them and there's nothing been given to me that has left me with an impression that there's anything but speculation as to what they may or may not do. So I'll be supporting the motion because of the regional NRM benefits, which have been stated by council officers. I understand the other work that they've done and I appreciate that perspective, but the component of this motion here where it's referring to that state government review during December twenty twenty-five, I think somebody else said it might be premature to leave. I think that's a pretty fair assessment.
Thank you councillor. Madison, I guess my other point is that of the hundred fifteen thousand dollars, I think that we would have
Point of, for the mayor, just so you're aware, you've already spoken against this motion?
Yes. But other people have been speaking more than once, but you haven't pulled them up?
No, we haven't.
Yeah, well, maybe we should have, I just noticed it then because
Okay, well, we normally would have, we'd normally have a good robust discussion amongst ourselves.
That has never been applied universally, but we'll agree to disagree.
That is not correct councillor Madison.
At times I've been rebutted by someone who's already spoken and then not afforded an opportunity to respond to the rebuttal, so I just say that again. That's my recollection and understanding of what's happened.
I'm happy to move suspension of standing orders for
But anyway, just so that you're aware that you did already formally speak against it.
Yes, I have formally spoken against it and I was, I'd normally like to have a very open, you know, this has been a contentious thing, it's come back to council a few times, I think it's to shut down the chair to raise a point, I think is I'll really leave it to you guys, but I just wanted to make sure that
I don't think there was any intention to shut down the chair, it was just to go back to the procedures Mayor. So as I said, I'm happy to, I'm happy to move a suspension of standing orders if you wish to continue Mayor.
Yes please. So may I
So moved.
Thank you, so you're moving suspending standing orders so that we can, people can speak to the matter more than once? more than once? Is that the notice of motion?
Correct.
Okay, I'll just wait for that. Thank you, councillor Tully.
Just for the purpose of open discussion, perhaps, if that's what you're...
If there's a discussion, thank you.
So inclined to, Mayor?
Thank you. I'll second that. Any discussion on that particular...
Just for everyone's awareness, I'm more than supportive of the suspension of meeting procedures. On this matter, we've already had a motion defeated and moved on to a foreshadowed motion, so we've had a lot of discussion. So just, at some stage, we probably do need to get a bit more stricter and move forward with the decision, unless new information is actually being imparted on, and should that new information be forthcoming, it probably needs to be through this mechanism.
Thank you, and that's one thing I did consider, because obviously we raised points in recommendation A, and now they're being repeated again in recommendation B, because it's a separate recommendation, so I think we are hearing some things, but I think it's important for the discussion. So I'll put that to the vote, that the suspension of meeting procedures be done. All those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, councillor Enchinnally. The only point I wanted to raise was the fact that with the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of rate payers' money during a cost of living crisis, I think there'll be more value in us doing works on our creekways and our catchment areas as well, as opposed to paying this particular fee. I don't have anything else to add, I'll open up for others to speak. Councillor Tully?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to note, this is the first time I've spoken in relation to the foreshadowed motion. So, yeah, just reiterating my point before, which councillor Madison also mentioned, is the fact that I do believe that it is premature for us to walk away from this organisation, our membership of this organisation, before the review, the state government review is undertaken. I think we need to wait until such findings of that review come out for us to make a formal decision going forward. That's why I support this motion, this foreshadowed motion put up by councillor Tully. I also would like to say that I think there's an opportunity for us going forward to take a council delegation to Healthy Land and Water. That delegation should consist of both officers and councillors to help to resolve any of our partnership concerns and arrangements going forward, so that we may actually get better outcomes. If there is, has been in the past some negativity or unwillingness by Healthy Land and Water simply through our officers' representations, then perhaps a delegation made up of our elected representatives may achieve more.
Thank you, councillor Enchinnally. And just note, in the past term, there was discussion by councils with Healthy Land and Water, and also myself had made a number of representations to Healthy Land and Water as well, but yes. Shall we come out of suspension of standing orders? No, shall we go back into meeting procedures? I'll move that. So you moved it, so councillor Tully moved it? I'll second it. All those in favour? Raise your hand, thank you, we're back to meeting procedures, so I think we're probably at the end where councillor Tully has a right of reply.
There's a lot to reply to, but I think people have made their point. It's one of these difficult issues where we've got different approaches to issues like this, which will arise in any council in Queensland, I guess, and it's just an opportunity for people to put their views on the line and to make a decision. But I still make the point that there will be, even if this motion is carried, there will be a review necessarily required after December twenty twenty five, we're only about at least seven or so months away from that.
Thank you, put the man to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's councillor Madison, councillor Tully, councillor Enchinnally, councillor Martin and councillor Madden. Those against, be it myself and councillor Augustine. Those abstaining, councillor Doyle. So that motion has passed, thank you. It's now twelve thirty one, I move that we adjourn for forty five minutes, or come back at, forty four minutes and come back at quarter past one. Do I have a second to for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle, put that to the vote, those in favour. Thank you, see you back at one fifteen, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. It's one fifteen on the twenty ninth of May, twenty twenty five. This is the ordinary council meeting. Welcome back. We're up to item seventeen point one, which is a notice of motion for a multicultural advisory committee. And I'll hand over to councillor Pi Augustine, who's put this notice of motion forward. Would you like to move your motion? And I'll get a second just so then you can speak to it.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Yes, I'd love to move my motion that I've put on the table to form a multicultural advisory committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Ed? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Councillor Augustine, over to you to move it, to speak to it.
Thanks, ma'am. So for me, Ipswich is home for an increasingly diverse population. The city currently has more than two twenty-two thousand residents who speak a language from a other than English, and is a home to migrants from one hundred and sixty-three countries of origin and over a hundred and fifty-two different languages. A city known traditionally as Yagura language, as Toulma, has been home to Aboriginal people since before the beginning of record recorded European settlement. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander residents make up five point five percent of our population, the highest in southeast Queensland. This diversity, multiculturalism, and also interculturalism are part of our identity as a city. It is one of our greatest strengths socially and economically, and it sits at the heart of who we are and why Ipswich is such a welcoming, inclusive community. More than more than one out of five residents in Ipswich was born overseas, which is amazing. Other languages other than English, Hindi, Swahili, Samoan, Punjab, Vietnamese, Filipino, Hindi, Spanish and Mandarin, to name a few. QACC, Queensland Community Council, focuses on addressing challenges faced by African migrants and fostering community engagement, as well as SSI, which is Settlement Services International, who have come to Queensland in two thousand and twenty-two. They've got a growing presence in Ipswich. I also want to acknowledge the importance of the theme of this week's National Reconciliation Week, which is bridging now to next. It is it is a clear focus on reconciliation, both its successes and setbacks. And then ask us, then we ask ourselves, as Australians living in this community, how do we take our next steps forward together to unite a future? We must never forget the mistreatment and grave injustices, and always remember the strength and resilience of the stolen generation and the generations that have followed them. There have been moments in Australia's reconciliation, a journey that may have made us want to turn away, but those things are divisive, and the worst thing we can do is disengage or disconnect. This year's theme, bridging now to next, is a reminder of that unfinished business and a call to action. Building a bridge first starts with agreement that the bridge needs to be built. Reconciliation Week is a time when we all all pause, reflect and take concrete steps towards addressing the ongoing disparities faced by Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities, including health, education and social inequalities. This advisory group is not seeking to speak on behalf of First Nations people or representing their interests as well as our multicultural groups. It is about creating a space where the various where the various initiatives, programs and funding the council does in this space can be captured, monitored and explored to identify potential opportunities or gaps in the work we do. I bring forward this motion to create a multicultural advisory committee to establish a central point to track, capture, report on and report on how we as council are fulfilling our commitment to create a city of opportunity for for all. While multiculturalism is is considered in many of these things we do in council, I believe there is opportunity to create a focal point where we can recognise, celebrate and foster the many initiatives, projects and support services we offer in this space. I would welcome the opportunity to bring my personal experience in the role of as chair, as the first councillor in Ipswich's history as of African heritage, and welcome the input and experiences of my fellow councillors as part of the proposed multicultural advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Augustine. Councillor Doyle, as a second, second, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm supportive of councillor Augustine's proposed with the notice of of motion. Councillor Augustine is obviously working really hard in this space already, meeting with various multicultural groups in our community, the leaders, both men and women. And I think her expertise and and history in this area would be of benefit to council. Just in relation to advisory committees, I I know there is a sense of not wanting to create too many subcommittees, but just having a look at the terms of reference for our committee structure, I note under clause nine advisory committees, it's in accordance with section two six five of the regulation. And it says an advisory committee or subcommittee may be established by a standing committee from time to time, or as an ongoing arrangement to allow a greater focus on a particular service area. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, in providing support in in setting up the advisory committee or subcommittee, it doesn't have to be a long-standing arrangement. The terms of reference, the terms of reference clearly speak to it being both an ongoing arrangement or just for the short term. In fact, later on in in clause nine, it talks about advisory committees may be disbanded when they've fulfilled their role as outlined in the terms of reference, followed by, you know, where appropriate, a less formal advisory group may be formed. So what I'm proposing, if councillors were willing to support councillor Augustine with her notice of motion, the subcommittee or advisory committee could be set up. And, you know, after a couple of meetings, it could be determined whether or not it should continue in that form or potentially continue in a different form.
Thank you. Open up further discussion? Yes, councillor Augustine.
Thanks, ma'am. And thanks for putting this on the agenda today, councillor Augustine. I think it's good to have the opportunity to talk about what council does in the multicultural space more broadly. Just for the benefit of the whole council, I've put my thoughts towards the way council and the community development team does currently support multiculturalism. Our committee development officers and community funding team obviously assist groups with providing for funding. And we've all attended programs and events that the council has supported financially, and they're generally pretty good time and well-attended. Similar to that, offices are involved with facilitating multicultural groups using council facilities. A number of council community senators get action from our local cultural groups. And again, I think we all support that. There is one such initiative in particular that I wanted to highlight this morning, that I don't really think the entire electa body is across. And that's the Ipswich Multicultural Community Leaders Network. So that's a group that's run by council officers, where multicultural Australia acts as the co-secretariat. So Multicultural Australia is a non-government organization that specializes in the multicultural space, does a lot of great programs. They previously also operated the Red Bank Plains Community Centre, and now they operate out of a community facility space at Brighton Homes Arena in partnership with the Brisbane Lions. That group, the network, which I'll use from here on, because there's lots of words in the the name and the title, meets fairly regularly. It was established in October of two thousand and twenty-two. It has representatives from a number of community groups which exist that are related to cultural endeavors and boundaries. It's I have attended one of these in the past, about eighteen months ago, and I'm told by the manager of our community development team that they're still functioning pretty well. And I think something such as this proposal today probably should go to an existing network and mechanism of council. Because we're already we already have a function that the officers are running in combination with a well-respected NGO in this space. And it would be good to make sure that that's utilized in any design of things, rather than potentially duplicating, as the current sort of proposal is quite open-ended. I just wanted to add on, I don't think, I certainly don't think you intended any malice, and I didn't take it as any malice, but I need to touch on some of the First Nations stuff with Reconciliation Week. In December of last year, we adopted the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Engagement Guide, which was negotiated with First Nations people on how they want to engage with council. So something like this would obviously need to go through working with them. And further to that, I'm not sure everyone has read it recently, certainly some of the councils who weren't here in the last term. We obviously have the Ipswich City Council Indigenous Accord, which we adopted in two thousand and twenty. So any entry into that space, I want to make sure that it's consistent with those two key documents that councils co-designed deliberately with First Nations people. So on that note, I would like to propose some amendments, just because I think that there's potential for us to go down a path and sort of better capture what council's currently doing in the space, better engage with the leaders' network, which is an an option that's open to the entire council, and then ensure that we don't do anything in the First Nations space without sticking to our adopted mechanisms, as there are always some valid sort of sensitivities that those things are respected. I'm just going to send it through to the committee No, I haven't had the opportunity to, though.
That's okay.
I, I did actually send an email of Wednesday last week suggesting that I had reached out and confirmed that the multicultural leaders' network still existed and that I thought that we should attend one of those before starting another advisory committee.
I'll let you send it.
Okay?
I'll let you send it.
Yeah. All right, I'll just send it. There's no subject, Vicky, I just drafted it before. So I'm happy to read it out. I'd suggest that a good path forward is we continue to engage in this dialogue, but just consider this, just as an open discussion that I bring to you all this morning. One of the things I think that can be covered off on is probably some extra reporting and awareness of what council does in the multicultural space before we identify what opportunities there are for improvement. So item A, that the terms of reference for the community and sport committee be amended to include the following words after community development and research, in brackets, including diversity and multiculturalism. Part B, that council acknowledge and continue to support the work of the Ipswich Multicultural Community Leaders Network to promote diversity and multiculturalism in Ipswich. And part C, that council's engagement with First Nations people continue to occur as per the City of Ipswich Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Engagement Guide, adopted in 2024, and the Ipswich City Council Indigenous Accord, adopted in 2020.
I've just got a point of order.
Yep.
Is that an amendment to add those to councillor Augustine's or to substitute the words of her motion?
I believe to substitute.
It's, it's a considerable change. It's basically not putting forward a multicultural advisory committee. So it's, do you want to do it as a foreshadowed?
Well, I've been at the discussion, look, I'm not against the idea, I just think collectively as decision makers, we have a piece of work to do to engage with existing bodies and identify need. But further to that also, make sure everyone's up to speed with what's council, council's doing.
Can I say?
So I'm more than happy to foreshadow it if that's what's considered appropriate.
If, if I could ask you to consider, this is a notice of motion brought forward by a councillor, so I, I have a lot of hesitation with changing it substantially. I think they are entitled to, you know, have, have their say. My preference would be that it is a foreshadowed motion, so that way councillor Augustine does get the opportunity to put forward her motion and, and for us to discuss that, if that's okay. That's, I just think, because it's a notice of motion brought forward from a councillor, you know, I'd hate to stifle anyone, I'd rather them have that, no matter how the vote goes, at least be given the opportunity to, to have their motion debated and discussed and voted on.
Yeah, look, it's, I'm more than happy for it to be foreshadowed if that's the, the view of the, the council, I respect that. I just have a view about how to proceed on this. I, I do think that there's, there's something in the council spending more time thinking about what we're doing in the space and identifying gaps. But the existing network, which has a number of community leaders, I really think that we should be firstly getting a better grasp of that and how it's performing, rather than creating something that could duplicate that function. So that's why I've proposed what I have today.
Thank you, councillor Madison.
Could I just write, continue that point of order please?
So we've got this foreshadowed motion, so can we just park that and can we go back to the original motion, AMB that councillor Augustine put through? And I call now for others to speak to it. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to recommendation A or B?
No, I, I just wanted to clarify, it, it was put up as an amendment, but it wasn't clear if that was substituting or.
Yes, well, it's a foreshadowed, no.
An easier way or more, more appropriate way to have the motion as proposed, considered, and then if that's regarded as a foreshadowed motion, I just needed to understand how it was going to be dealt with on the floor.
Do you have any comments on motion, on recommendations A or B?
No, not at this stage.
Not at this age? Councillor Doyle? So you're the second of it, yes?
Yeah, councillor Augustine's original notice of motion, just want to reiterate my, my support for the notice of motion and its original.
I'm just going to.
Can we just let councillor Doyle finish?
Yeah, no, I'm just going to give the point of order again, that second time.
Oh, my apologies, I've, I've missed that. I was going around.
Yeah.
My, my apologies, so if you want me to stick to the procedures that strictly, we also have nothing for and against, so my, my apologies, I, it's late in the day.
Yeah, so I'm happy to again move the suspension of the standing orders for open discussion.
Oh, just forget it.
Okay.
Oh, it's not a matter of, I mean, we do have procedures and the procedures are, are tend to be enforced by the mayor quite, quite often.
Oh, you know, I usually run things quite, quite.
Yeah, I think you.
Excuse me, stop interrupting me, councillor Antonelli. Councillor Antonelli, stop interrupting me under section 9.11, you know this, to stop interrupting. You know, I try to run things a bit more informally to allow the robust discussion. If you want me to follow them absolutely to the letter of the law, excuse me, stop back chatting. If you want me to do them absolutely to the court of law, then we do only a for, against, for and against. I do try to enfranchise everyone here to be able to speak and not definitely keep to that order of for, against, for, against. So I'm going around the table because it is a council's notice of motion. Councillor, do you wish to speak to recommendation A or B?
I did move the suspension of standing orders, are we still discussing that?
Okay, you've.
I moved a motion.
And what's the reason for the spending the steps of standing orders?
I did say at the time, I moved the suspension of standing orders for open discussion.
Do we have a second, do? Councillor Madison, second? I'll put that, any discussion? Councillor Tully?
I'll, I'll support that, but I think it behoves us to, to consider this issue because as you rightly say, you know, doing a for and against situation and so on can lead to some complexities and situations where some councillors don't have the opportunity of speaking. So I've always been pretty reluctant to, to raise points of order in this sort of situation. I'm not saying I'm right and any other, anyone else is wrong, but this is, the, the matter before us is a pretty sensitive matter.
Yes.
And it's an important matter.
Exactly.
Probably the only way forward, when someone does raise a point of order is to, you know, to determine that and, you know, to have an open discussion. So even though I'll support it on this occasion, I think as councillors, we need to get together to be. That's one area of our meeting procedures where it's pretty restrictive in a lot of ways.
And that's why I was quite informal, as you know.
I agree with that and, but it's been raised twice today. So I, I think it's not a matter of just continuing, some, some of our best debates have been when there's been cross discussion and questions and, you know, even one or two interjections. And I'm not, I'm not saying improper interjections, but sometimes that can be very helpful. So I think we really need to put our mind to, and I'm explaining why I'm supporting it on this occasion, just to make sure there can be that flexibility in the future.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, carried. So in that case, if it's just the suspension is so people can speak openly, in that case, councillor Doyle, do you wish to speak to it for a second time? My apologies, I've forgotten that you'd already spoken to it. Okay, no worries, I'll keep going around. Councillor Antonelli, do you wish to speak to the recommendation AMB?
Yeah, just very briefly, and obviously we've just heard from councillor Madison about the other opportunities that exist and other community groups that exist, something that perhaps we should have known of at the time of the notice of motion. I, I congratulate councillor Augustine's enthusiasm for this matter and certainly support her enthusiasm for this matter. However, one of the things that I find weird in this matter is that we don't have any terms of reference or anything prescriptive as to what the goal and achievements are, purpose of with respect to this advisory committee in front of us. I do think that this is something that probably should have come through the committee process so that the officers could speak to it as well. However, it just does highlight the frustration of many councillors that we have to bring forward these notices of motion in this forum, in this way, rather than having some other opportunities to discuss at forums where the councillors get together to discuss these things. It's, I believe it's a weakness of our council that we don't have that, that we are forced to make these notices of motion through this forum. However, I, I, I must say that, and that's my personal view.
I'll just do a point of order, councillor Antonelli, we're using the model meeting procedures from the state government, so if I ask you just to move on to the point of the notice of motion, please?
I thought we had some flexibility, Mayor. So I.
Apparently not, that's all we've got, standing orders.
Very good, Mayor. So in relation to that, I did, I did express my frustration, so, but I'm, I'm certainly, I do support the enthusiasm of councillor Augustine, but I do think we need further discussion and, and maybe the foreshadowed motion might be, might be the way forward.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Do you have any comments? No comments? Councillor Madden?
I'll be voting in favour of this particular notice of motion. I think multiculturalism is a great strength of the Ipswich community. We also know that one in five residents of Ipswich were born overseas. We are home to the highest population of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander residents in South East Queensland, and as we continue to grow rapidly, I think a multicultural advisory committee is a good governance mechanism for council to ensure that it has a central point where there is a focus where we can do our part to ensure any opportunities or barriers facing those in our community from culturally diverse backgrounds is addressed. I think councillor Augustine is the perfect councillor to chair this advisory committee as someone with lived experience. And I think probably the only person in this room who wasn't born in Australia as well. The Multicultural Community Leaders Network is a great network. I have attended the, the meetings many times and I know councillor Augustine has as well. And I see this as a natural progression from that network as we evolve as a community. Council must continually seek to achieve outcomes for the whole community. This committee, this advisory committee would fill a gap and I think complement what is currently existing council to support this large section of our community through knowledge sharing, connecting key stakeholders, learning and advocacy support, as well as setting the standard for partnerships and collaboration. This advisory committee could also bridge the gap between local government and any specialised support services and organisations who are established or emerging in Ipswich. Communities thrive when everyone, regardless of their culture, language or faith, is supported to connect, contribute and belong. This committee has the potential to be a strategic tool for building a stronger and equitable community by elevating the advantages of multiculturalism, including attracting diverse talent, business and investment to our community. And I'll lean on councillor Augustine's lived experience in this. From a personal perspective, white girl born in Australia, but my former husband's Brazilian, he came out to Australia like in the late twenties and he's, so when he was in his late twenties, we set up a community group and a soccer team down in Sydney. So I don't know what it's like, but I worked very much alongside multicultural groups as well. And I know everyone has a different need and I think this would be really complement what we currently do in, in council and I do commend councillor Augustine for this. And she has my 110% support, 110% support for this.
Thanks, Mayor. Can?
Yes, I put that anyone can speak.
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to address councillor Madison, no malice. And I, I know you said that you don't think that I had any malice, no. I've got, in this particular forum, definitely not.
Yeah, great.
Yeah. So I don't know why you would raise it in that sort of context. But the, the leaders, well, we're using the word network because it's quite a long title. I, I don't bring this up as, just because I want to create something. I've had a lot of dealings with the multicultural community and even this week I had a meeting with our Tamil community. And even though it's a good networking, we've got lots of other networking programs through, through council. We've got, in our arts section, we've got our arts advisory, but then there's a whole heap of other arts advisory groups as well through Ipswich as well, so, which we lean on. In this particular one, that meet, I, I put it to council. If it is, we are running it, what's the reporting process? If it's been around since 2022, where's the reporting mechanism from this network? And, and so from there, I think this is one of the reasons why I'm wanting to create this, this committee. So things like that don't fall through the crack. So I've spoken to a couple of community leaders and that attended regularly and I spoke to three definitely and asked them what is their feeling of it. They say it's great for networking, knowing what's happening in the community, even if the commu, even if there, there's something that's happening outside of our community, they'll talk about it there that, you know, the Sudanese are having a Sudanese day, but it's out of, of Ipswich. So it's great for, to learn what's happening within the community. But the regularity of the meetings, the actions that come out of those meetings are lost within the timeframe of the next meeting. And so this is the sentiment of these leaders, that yes, it's great, but by the time they come back around to the meeting, what was supposed to be actioned, was it actioned? Who's keeping a record of the action? And so that's, for, for that side of things, I think that being able to make sure that there's a reporting process, so we know exactly what's happening in our, especially our multicultural community. And added to that, the, the multicultural leader that I met just this week, lives in Belbert Park, didn't know about this leaders' forum. So who's accountable to make sure all of our leaders have been identified and are actually going to this network? That's again, we're falling through the cracks. And I understand councillor Madison's point of view, but we're looking from a council's point of view outside. Who's looking from outside in? Not just our multicultural side of things, our indigenous friends as well. In one of our, our community development strategy plan, we, we, we talk about, one of the initiatives is black coffee. I spoke to one of the indigenous, she's quite prevalent in the indigenous community. And I said, oh, where's black coffee? Oh, I don't know, hasn't been, hasn't happened for a long time. So there's those things that keep falling through the cracks. And I'm like, what's the mechanism to make sure that both our multicultural and our indigenous don't fall through the cracks? We have artists say, oh, we didn't know what was happening, we didn't know we needed to submit. You know, so there's a lot of things that fall through the cracks as we, as I've seen coming into council for this last year and a half. So yeah, so I do think it's a mechanism to be able to help our multicultural and our indigenous friends. And it's not to speak on their behalf, it's to have a mechanism so things don't fall through the cracks. And the terms of reference, I was advised at the first meeting, if this was to pass, that's when we'd flesh out, flesh it out a little bit more. I've got a, just a blueprint that executive services created, so there is something already created. So, yep, thank you.
Thank you. I open up for further discussion. I didn't touch on the indigenous side, which I think is obviously of concern here. And I think the multicultural advisory committee would still have to follow all of council's policies and guidelines and procedures, so it would still have to follow the indigenous community engagement guide. But it'd still have to follow any of those policies, the advisory committee doesn't override that at all. So there's not, there's an intent there to interfere or override that in any way. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I appreciate your perspective on that, Mayor. My view is we should just be doing the consultation on the front end as to what, including whether or not they see the advisory committee as the mechanism that is best. And that includes this sort of consultation with the leaders' network. For me, it's about going out and, I guess the disagreement I hold with councillor Augustine's motion is that I just think that there's a better way to proceed where we go out and engage through our existing mechanisms and establish what they think should happen and what issues exist. Or, because it may very well be the case that we can amend or update existing mechanisms. So just noting that council officers have a finite amount of time and it's not always best to create something new when we've got something that's working and perhaps there's a way that we can make that more successful. I certainly think if there's any measure for council to increase its engagement with our multicultural community or our First Nations community, I want to hear it and I want us to work through that. But times, at times in the community development space, we need to magnify the existing structures sometimes because there's. because there's potentially not the level of awareness of an existing service that is there. So that's a challenge that our community development team have done on a number of fronts. But with regards to that First Nations stuff, I understand your perspective. My view is that that consultation should happen on the front end before we design, we sort of create a committee.
I'll open up for other discussion. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to finish by reiterating my initial comments, which was the advisory committee is not set in stone. I think we're all getting a little bit ahead of ourselves about what it should and shouldn't achieve. It could be one or two meetings to discuss what is already being done within council and within the community. And a decision may be made at that point that, you know, all the boxes are being ticked and there's not a lot more we could do as council to add value. Those preliminary discussions could absolutely take place as an advisory committee, one, two meetings. And if it needs to then be disbanded, because there isn't really a remit or it's already falling within the committee. Yeah, I don't understand why we wouldn't even, yeah, just invest that time and allow. It's a vehicle that councillor Augustine would like to drive, obviously. And I think is best placed to drive this particular part of the portfolio, at least initially, to have, like I said, preliminary discussions about all the different pieces of work. I'm very across the accord, it's a big part of our work last term. Councillor Augustine is absolutely across that, so.
Thank you. Councillor, you had your light on, but off?
Yeah, I'm not sure whether we should get into the habit of just establishing an advisory committee and then doing our homework. I think we should do our homework first and then look to establish an advisory committee. But having said that, and I commend councillor Augustine for her leadership and her enthusiasm in this matter. I just, I just tend to agree with councillor Madsen, who is the committee chair for, well, would be ordinarily the committee chair for matters pertaining to community cultural services. That I think we should do some homework before we look to establish it. And if it is the case that we should have one, then I would be more than happy to support the advisory committee then and councillor Augustine's leadership of it.
May I ask a question? How many people here have attended the Multicultural Community Leaders Network? I haven't, yeah. I have many times, you have? Are we the only two?
I've attended.
I thought you said you went last month, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't, wasn't in last, it was created in 2022. Okay, just wanting to know. I guess councillor Augustine, you've got your light on, do you wish to respond to?
Oh, yeah, I just want to finish up with just a couple of things that just, what councillor Madsen said, you know, we need to magnify. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, magnify, so we can actually look in to see what we can do better. Homework, councillor Antonelli, I've done my homework, I live it every day. I have meetings with multicultural people nearly every single week, so I live and breathe it. Even to the point of talking to, went to the police awards and them talking about in our DV is becoming very prevalent in a multicultural community. And going to the leaders' group with that issue, I think it wouldn't get the benefit of what could be, could happen with our DV strategy, that we could, you know, push it through that way. But knowing all those little, you know, little things in our community to see where we can actually drive it. Yeah, I just, if we haven't, if, if, there's hardly anyone at this table that has looked into multiculturalism and the multicultural community and actually dived in. And I don't mean just turning up to an event and off we go. I mean actually talking to a multicultural community, knowing, you know, the difference between our Eritrean community. Do we know? Do we know? No. We've got an issue with our Eritrean community, with a church here in Ipswich. Which Eritrean community are we talking about? Because they're two different, they don't talk. So which one are we dealing with? That's how the in-depth knowledge that I have in this space. But anyway.
Thank you. And in support, certainly it's about my interactions with the multicultural community. And not everyone's the same, everyone has different views, but they're strongly supportive of this advisory council. They know it's not a bucket of money in any way. It's about, I think, community development and coming together and building community as well. And for them and also their families and their kids, they're looking to the future as well. So I think the next, if I'm wrong, councillor Augustine, is the next network meeting next week? Fifth, okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, because I think oddly enough, we need to answer standing orders and then councillor Augustine can have a right of reply.
Yes.
If she wishes, that's her choice. Look, there's no disagreement for me in terms of magnifying what exists, seeing where council can improve. I've just got a different opinion about how we go through that process. So I've raised my views today because I think it's actually been a very worthwhile discussion. I think everyone around the table wants to know if there isn't an area for improvement in this space. There just may be some different ideas about how to explore that. So I've proposed what I've put up and I stand by that. I just wanted to refocus on that term magnify. Our community development team has done a lot of amazing work in the last couple of years by removing the council from areas where we duplicate services and actually connecting up groups so that it's well delineated on who does what. We do this amongst a number of areas and spaces. That's why, for me, I'm pretty keen to ensure that we run a pretty delineated path forward that uses existing structures and non-government organisations that are funded to do that sort of work where we can. So I certainly don't disagree with the sentiment and the idea that councillor Augustine's brought forward. I just have a different way of looking into the issue and ensuring that actually all decision makers get a full view of what council does in the space before we identify what the best mechanism for, or if a new mechanism is required. Like, I think it's a bit cart before the horse, in my opinion, but I've said that enough.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. Any other, while we still have standing orders suspended, is there any other commentary? No? Councillor Doyle, no? You're looking at me strangely?
We've got the technicality of suspending standing orders and going back into, yeah.
We'll go back into open, noting that I haven't spoken to the matter in open yet, just to be really clear. Back in, not open, but back in, we're back in our meeting procedures. In that case, I'll move that we go back to our meeting procedures. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Put the ballot to the vote, those in favour, unanimous and carried. Thank you, we're back. I think councillor Madden, you hadn't, you were reserving your right? If we get to it. Okay. So you don't wish to speak to this matter? Okay. In that case, can I just say that I have found that councillor Augustine is incredibly professional and has done her homework on this. There's been discussions with the multicultural community. I think it's quite a considered notice of motion. I think we should give her the benefit and think of the community and what the needs of the community are. The terms of reference are yet to be decided. As all the other advisory committees, they will come together and things will be popping in and out of scope. And I think councillor Doyle also talked about the fact that, you know, there's a great deal of flexibility under the act and the regulations because the advisory committees as well. Is there something else? I'll hand over to councillor Augustine for a right of reply in closing and then we'll go to a vote.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I acknowledge the comments by my fellow councillors and I appreciate that we might have some different approach to these issues and we have different perspectives. But I'd like to offer some clarity and reinforce why my motion is not just necessary but overdue. Over the past several months, I've been actively engaged with multicultural and First Nations community and well, as well as service providers throughout Ipswich. One consistent message I've heard again and again is that our communities want a clear, central point of contact within council. They want someone they can go to, maybe a multicultural community liaison officer or designated structure, where their concerns won't just be heard but followed up. These are not just my words, these are words of people who have lived, worked and served in our community. Some remember a time where there might have been such a person in council. Many are asking why doesn't it exist anymore. The current Multicultural Community Leaders Network is a useful forum. It facilitates information sharing, discussion. They see value in a central hub, not just for talking, but for tracking, documenting and actioning issues. They want to ensure that minutes, concerns and commitments and actioning issues. They want to, from these meetings, some leaders have spoken that they didn't even know this network existed, which raises questions. Who ensures this network is accessible, inclusive, accountable? The advisory committee, isn't it about duplicating work? It's about creating clear lines of rope responsibility. It's about giving multicultural and First Nations community a genuine seat at the table and council a mechanism to reflect on how it is performing in this space. It's not about bureaucracy, it's about building trust, about making sure council has a tool to serve all communities effectively, especially those who historically haven't had a strong voice in our system. We have a specialised committee for motorsports, sports, arts, libraries. But what you're telling me is that we don't need one for this. Very important issue. This is not a polit, this is not political, it's practical and it's highlighting the right thing to do. I urge you again, let's take steps to go forward. Six, six, six. They know the best.
I'm happy to move that if required, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for the discussion today. Moving forward, I hope that we can all respect whatever decision council makes and work together to address the ideas and things that have been brought to us. I have a personal view and that's why I've put up what I have today, that this is the best path forward. The current path forward prior to this meeting hasn't included enough engagement with council officers. It hasn't really involved enough reporting or awareness for everyone before they make a decision about what happens and where. A lot of anecdotal evidence has been provided, which I don't dispute that that is correct to the people that have said it. But we just need to proceed forward down a path that I've proposed. If anyone, if you agree with me, you can vote however you like on the matter. I think this is just the path forward, that's why I've proposed it. Let's go out and review everything that happens and then establish something if it's required at the end of that. It's just a different way about approaching the same problem. I don't, there's things I could rebut, but I'll refrain from rebutting out of respect because I don't want it to get too petty or personal on anything. Because at the end of the day, everyone in this room wants to see if there's an improvement that we can make in this space. And if that's the case, let's do it. There's just a disagreement of how to identify if any improvements are possible. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Madden has a second, do you wish to speak to it? Thank you.
I have a very diverse ancestry. That includes ancestors from England, Ireland, Germany and Poland. I had an ancestor on the first fleet. I think possibly councillor Madsen and I might know that. I'm proud, I spend Christmas in Innisfar with my Italian cousins because I have Swedish and Italian cousins as well. If I'm going to go out, I love to go out to the Polish club in Brisbane. I'm proud of my multicultural ancestry.
Mayor, I'd propose an adjournment for 10 or 15 minutes if possible. 10 minutes, 15?
10 minutes, a second will come back at quarter past two. Those in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous and carried, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Ordinary Council meeting for the 29th of May, 2025. We're on item number 17.1, a notice of motion, and it's 28 minutes past two. My understanding is that we were on a foreshadowed motion, and I think councillor Madsen, did you want to...
It's semantics, but it's actually the live motion before council.
So I apologise that that...
I'm happy to withdraw it to be replaced by another.
Okay, so we'll withdraw that. I have been provided... I'll just wait for Vicky to catch up. I have been provided another recommendation with five recommendations, and Vicky will put up on the screen. So I understand that councillor Augustine, you're going to move that one. Did you wish to read it out? What's on the screen? Or would you like me to? It's up to you.
Oh, um, yeah, so A, that a multicultural advisory committee be established, reporting to the community and sports committee, yeah, for a period of six months. That myself be appointed as the chairperson of the multicultural advisory committee, and the membership be appointed as follows: myself as chairperson and councillor Madsen as deputy chair, and then any other members.
Can I pause to ask to see who else would like to be on that advisory committee? So councillor Antinelli, councillor Martin, and councillor Doyle. I'll put that forward. Thank you. Sorry, I'll see.
Yep, and C, that the terms of reference of the community and sport committee be amended to include the following words after 'community development and research', in brackets, 'including diversity and multiculturalism', and D, that council acknowledge and continue to support the work of the Ipswich Multicultural Community Leaders Network to promote diversity and multiculturalism in Ipswich. And E, that council's engagement with First Nations people continue to occur as per the City of Ipswich Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Engagement Guide, adopted in 2024, and the Ipswich City Council Indigenous Accords, adopted in 2020.
Thank you. And do I have a second for that? Councillor Madsen, thank you very much.
If I may, can I just seek a clarification of A, just simple English if I may? I take it that the advisory committee be established for a period of six months, reporting to the community? Yeah, yeah, sorry, because it looks like it's only reporting for six months.
Sure, that, thank you. No, that's... So, Vicky, if you could, be established for a period of six months? Reporting to. Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Councillor Augustine, as the mover, do you wish to speak to this?
I commend my fellow councillors for their robust decision, the input and the collaborative and collegic way that we've moved forward on this motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Madsen, as the second, do you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chair, I should say, before I say thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion this afternoon. It's always difficult knowing the sensitivities in this area. I've known all of you for a number, enough time to know that the heart is in the right place for everyone. It's at times a difficult space to operate in, especially the First Nations challenges that we've seen in our country and continue to see. And that too for new migrants to Australia, how the experience can be for them. So I've never had any thought otherwise that everyone on this council here in Ipswich supports multiculturalism and wants to see what's best for our multicultural community. We've got a bit of an agreed path on moving forward, and I'll accept the decision of the council. I'm just looking forward to the process moving forward and council officers. Because one thing that I just have to reiterate once more, we've got a really good community development team that have done things in the last couple of years that have made our council much more effective and active and efficient on the ground, which is really great. There's some anecdotal stories of some councils in Queensland potentially not having community development teams. So I'm very proud of the one that we have, and I'm very cognizant that they'll be able to contribute greatly to this process. But furthermore, I'm not sure I've expressed it well today, but the concern for me was always the people who design a proposed committee themselves need to come from a multicultural background, but a plurality needs to be part of that process. Because the plurality of multiculturalism in Ipswich is so broad, a wide range of experiences and different dialects and struggles within Australia that hopefully the council can help them receive support. So provided we move forward in good spirits and try to make this as successful as it can be, I'm very happy with the motion as it stands.
Thank you very much, councillor Madsen. I'll leave it to the discussion. Here's councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. It's been a very sensitive issue, a very difficult issue, and one in which I think our views are all pretty similar. It's how we achieve that, and what's the best way for the council to move forward to have an approach to multiculturalism and diversity that's appropriate for our council, and obviously even more appropriate for the wider community, what we've been able to do. And it just shows how council meetings with the strictures on debate and motions and foreshadowed motions, how you can actually combine both motions, because even the second part of councillor Madden's, Madsen's original motion is not inconsistent with councillor Augustine's motion. We, people were just coming at it from a different direction. So this is a, an opportunity for us to move forward. You know, when we talk about these things, you can often reach consensus. There's not winners and losers. You know, we've got to make sure the community's not the loser in our decision-making. So that's why I'm very supportive of this way forward, and the combined, I'll call it a combined motion, because that's what it is, and hopefully councillor Augustine, who raised the original issue, can hold her head up high in the community, and councillor Madsen, who's the chair of the relevant committee to which the advisory committee will report, can work harmoniously as the chair and deputy chair. But it does need more work to be done about the terms of reference, obviously. It's not totally putting the cart before the horse. It's recognising that there's still a lot more work to be done of how the terms of reference and how the community is engaged. That's going to be a massive issue, I think, for the advisory committee to work that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? I'll say that thank you very much for coming to a combined motion, for that maturity. I think our community will appreciate that. I also like to highlight that we do have an exceptional community development team, and they have outstanding leadership. And I'm just pleased that we can leverage the amazing work that they have done, the work that they initiated in our community, and leverage that in going forward. And I'm just pleased to see this evolve and making sure that we continue to support our community in going forward. So thank you very much. Councillor Augustine, as the mover, do you wish to write a reply before we go to the vote?
I'll reserve my right. Thank you.
Go straight to the right, so. Pass. Okay, we put the matter to the vote for items A through to E. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I have another notice of motion from councillor Tully, and it's, notice of motion 17.2, reinstatement of the voluntary buyback scheme. I'll hand over you to see how you'd like this. Do you wish to move this? Sure.
From Ipswich, seeking the reinstatement of the voluntary buyback scheme for flood-affected properties in Queensland. As I said, if I have a second, I'll then propose the...
Okay, councillor Martin, what is he handed first?
Okay, the amendment which I've given to the committee clerk is to add the words, after the word voluntary buyback, which was not the only element of the Resilient Homes Fund, so under buyback in the second line, to add the words, yeah, including all aspects of the Resilient Homes Fund. There should be a comma before including and after fund to make, so that's clearly an addition, including all aspects of the resilient home. And if the second is agreeable to that, then I'll speak to that amendment motion.
Just from the, the resilient homes, it's the overarching program with three, voluntary home buyback is one of those. Thank you. I'll just check with the second. Are you okay with that amendment? Can I suggest another amendment, just in line with protocol, elected rep to elected rep, to have the mayor write to the Prime Minister, the Queensland Premier, as opposed to the CEO? That would be in line with protocol?
I'm happy with that. I'm happy.
Sorry, you're happy with that? Thank you. Are you okay? Thank you very much. Just wait. Would you like to speak to the motion? Thank you.
This arose from a report handed down 10 days ago by the Honourable Paul De Jersey. He's the former Chief Justice of Queensland and also the governor, former governor of Queensland. His report was in relation to Cyclone Alfred. He'd prepared a similar, another report about flooding from the 2022 flood. But part of his recommendation 10 days ago was, and it was pretty, his latest review for 2025, the flooding with Cyclone Alfred, said that he found that there should be an approach to the state and federal governments to reinstate the funding for the Resilient Homes Fund. It was reported as saying that could benefit from a buyback or retrofitting scheme. Now principally, his latest report was in relation to the city of Brisbane rather, yeah, when Cyclone Alfred came close to Brisbane. Part of his report said that there were 8,903 properties which experienced some form of flooding as a result of Cyclone Alfred, and there was an estimated 368 homes which had water through them. But interestingly, his report found that of the two, the Brisbane City Council had a scheme prior to 2022 in relation to buybacks, plus the current state and federal scheme. But he found that 405 properties purchased under the two schemes by the Brisbane City Council, 72% of them would have been impacted again by the 2025 event. Very, you know, and I suspect the comparative data for the city of Ipswich would be very similar. I have raised on a number of occasions, as councillors would be aware, that we need to continue to expand, extend the, probably not expand, but extend the buyback scheme, which is pretty close to being finished. If we don't, for future generations, we're just leaving them to flood again and with all the impacts. So it's an opportunity to write to the state and federal governments and our local members. I'd hope other councils may pick this up as well, such as Logan City, possibly Gold Coast, Morton Bay, and other councils in Queensland which have benefited from the buyback scheme. Well, I'll just call it the buyback scheme for simplicity, but it would be good to get this moving. So that otherwise, you know, we had a look at the floods at Taree, just in the last 10 days or so. It just continues and continues and continues, and people will say, oh, how did council approve all these developments in flood areas? Well, there were no town planning controls in Goodna, for example, until 1967. And most of the houses that flooded, not all of them, but most of them were built in the 1940s and 50s, the ones that flooded when Brisbane Terrace was the main road. So the history of it is not to accuse councils in the past, before my time I might add, that, you know, allowed these developments. And as I said, there were no controls. So hopefully, this is the first time, I think, we're formally pushing for this. I think we put up a motion to the local government conference. But, you know, let's use this current situation with Cyclone Alfred and the New South Wales situation. Maybe not as big and as grand as the original buyback scheme that we've had, but something substantial, so that there is a continual buyback over the next few years.
Thank you. So, Martin, do you have anything you'd like to add as a second?
Yeah, I'd just like to confirm councillor Tully's sentiments, and also, I dare say, all of us sitting around this table, no people had flooded 2011, 23. And a couple of my mates actually were flooded, and they said it was a great relief this time round, because they were flood buyback recipients, that for the first time in a long time, they weren't on tenterhooks where the flood levels were coming. And I dare say again, all sitting around this room, we all agree that Southland Alfred, we dodged a bullet. I'd also like to say, like Wiggy down at Goodna, he's one that had his house bought back. And just like to say, I'd love to see down there at Enid Street, I think we all saw that, pretty national news, that street got trashed, that we could extend our sporting fields down there for Western Pride. So, yeah, I just concur with councillor Tully. So I think it's a great initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting in support of councillor Tully's notice of motion. I think it's absolutely important that the voluntary buyback scheme continues, the resilient homes funding continues to be funded at both state and federal level. It's critical. I was contacted after Cyclone Alfred earlier in the year by a couple of academics from UQ. They'd been tasked with reviewing the resilient homes fund for the government. So they came out and interviewed me, and certainly my feedback was along the lines of, it absolutely needs to continue. And seeing the impact on the ground during Alfred, admittedly, we didn't get the amount of rain or flood impact that we could have. Our low-lying areas, certainly within Division Three, were still impacted. So as I went around through the suburbs, there was a certain amount of relief that particular homes had been bought back and knocked down, because had they still been there, they absolutely would have flooded again. So I was delighted to be able to give my feedback. So I know the state government will be producing a report on what worked and what didn't work with the resilient homes fund. So I'm looking forward to reading that. Part of my feedback to them was also that I believe it should extend not just from residential to commercial. And I know that might seem a little bit controversial, but I feel very passionate about not continuing to put vulnerable residents in harm's way. So if there is a particular parcel of land, a large parcel of land that's owned by a developer, has been earmarked for decades for residential development, I absolutely think those sorts of properties should qualify for a buyback. Not all developers have deep pockets. Sometimes it might be a mum and dad investor, and it's been their superannuation. So I absolutely understand that they want to be able to do something with that piece of land. But I stand firm in that we shouldn't be continuing to put residents in harm's way and allowing that type of development to continue. And we've seen in this council, time and time again, we can make a decision... And we've seen in this council, time and time again, we, we can make a decision, a decision to, uh, not approve a certain development. And then we might have, um, a decision out of the courts that overturn our decision and, and allow that development to proceed into, uh, a flooded area. So that's an important piece of work that we need to do the advocacy, uh, within. We need to keep, you know, lots of different stakeholders and industries need to be educated in this space. The state and federal government can't keep spending money on buying back properties to, at the same time, uh, approve developments in flood plains. It just does not make sense. Um, I know we've had a long day, but if you would indulge just for two seconds, and I know councillor Tully's really going to enjoy this, uh, being our local historian, um, particularly in relation to flood matters. So, um, recently I attended, uh. Ah, no, I've got eighteen forty one. So when we were speaking earlier today about floodlines, um, and levels, it, I mean, this is critical when we think about flood buyback properties, um, knowing where the river has gone previously. Uh, so I recently attended the gallery Flood Lines. So that was a collaborative project between artist Kylie Stevens and local historian Margaret Cook. Um, and it was a multimodal exhibition of combined community stories, historical documents, photography, and a, an amazing painting, um, by Kylie Stevens. Um, Margaret Cook, of course, is, um, the author of River With A City Problem here in Ipswich. Uh, and she has her P, uh, PhD, and she's very, um, um, very across, um, flooding in Ipswich. Anyway, uh, she came across, um, Kylie Stevens, the artist, at Kylie's exhibition Ways Of Water. Um, there was a particular flood painting that Kylie, um, had done, um, from the floodlines in two thousand and eleven. Anyway, both women collaborated to bring, uh, floodlines to Ipswich Gallery recently. As part of that research, um, they got copies of historical maps, um, from both picture Ipswich and the state archives. Um, they got, uh, the map which is known as Wade's map, which I'm sure councillor Tully knows all about, Henry Wade. Um, yeah, so that is an historic map from eighteen forty two. Uh, Kylie had create, has created a piece of artwork based off that map. But in doing that and working alongside historian Margaret Cook, um, Kylie identified some white dotted lines. Now, previously, we, we know that the eighteen nineties, um, floodline, there is a marker at St Mary's. But, um, in, in Ipswich, we certainly didn't have anything that predated that. We now have floodlines from eighteen forty three. Um, thanks to forty, sorry, forty one, thanks to, um, it's eighteen forty two. Um, thanks to, um, Margaret Cook and, and, um, Kylie Stevens. So Kylie painted the picture of the map from eighteen forty two, eighteen forty one. Um, and, but in doing so, was talking with Margaret about what some of the lines and markings on the map meant. Um, Margaret's husband happens to be, um, a very, um, highly regarded geologist. So Margaret took the map to her husband and asked to identify what the dotted line might be. Um, both Kylie and Margaret had assumed it might be some type of track or path. As it turns out, Nick was able to have, um, a close look and identified that it was in fact a floodline. There were also, um, some, um, um, some data at the bottom of the map. Nick being a geologist was able to interpret that, um, and calculate what the floodlines were. So fun fact. Um, that is all documented. Um, so I look forward to having, um, our local history books updated accordingly. But, um, Margaret Cook actually referred to it as a eureka moment, as a researcher, when you come across something new. Um, and we now have a floodline for our eighteen forty one flood. Thank you.
Thank you. It's compelling, isn't it? Thank you. Any other commentary? I was going to just say that I too als, will also be supporting this, councillor Tully. Um, the Volatran Buyback has been a very successful program, allowing almost three hundred Ipswich families to move on with their lives by moving away from the highest risk flood zones. This is something that I have been consistently advocating for other levels of government. Um, both myself and councillor Antonelli were just for the last two days at the LGAQ Disaster Management Conference. And I again raised it with the QRA as well. Our council also put this forward as a motion for last year's LGAQ conference as well. Um, and given the importance to the community for the potential for financial compensation to allow them to start over, I fully support your call, councillor Tully, to advocate for this program to become permanent. Um, I'll also undertake to, councillor Tully, to raise this motion, your motion, the advocacy advisory committee, to see if we can make that part of it. And that also obviously come back to council for a council decision, to see if we can make your motion part of our, um, originally significant project under our advocacy program as well. That way we put the full weight of council's advocacy effort consistently, uh, behind that. And I truly believe, um, and obviously from, coming from Goodna, this program, you're not myself, councillor Tully, but this program becoming routine would be transformational for the Ipswich community, as we have identified several hundred more homes that are located in the highest risk flood category, at least another three hundred plus homes that we know, um, would, those families would certainly benefit. I think it's deserving of a coordinated and targeted approach as an advocacy priority, and it will remain a priority until we achieve this goal. I think it would be fantastic. I come for the people of Ipswich, and I thank you, councillor Tully, for this motion. Any other discussion? Councillor Tully, would you like a right of reply before we go to vote?
Yeah, I will. Um, there were a couple of, uh, matters that were raised, and it was about the voluntary buyback, although there was the, uh, My High Grove situation where it changed, um, with, with the majority of support. Um, and we do have the situation in part of Goodna, which was alluded to before, where one, one property owner, and I, um, without going into details, I think they've been there for a long time. And I was told in another council that one of their, uh, processes, and this is not part of the buyback process at the moment, but it's worthy of consideration, depending upon the age and people don't want to move, that the, there can be a buyback. They can get their money and then stay there, uh, for their lifetime, um, as a life tenants, um, in, in what was their, their property for either a minimal or so that eventually the council gets the property. Now, that would depend upon the age of the person's involved and the likelihood and how soon it might be. But that's another aspect of this whole proposal. The other that councillor Doyle raised is another twist to all of this. When John Oxley came up, um, the Brisbane River in December eighteen twenty three, came up as far as Goodna to Woogaroo, what's now known as Woogaroo Creek. He noted in his journals, um, just from recollection, he, he talked about debris in the trees, um, that, that indicated a, a major flood and the way it was described later on and interpreted later on, that the height of the trees indicated with the debris, that it could have been about twenty years earlier. Um, and could have been even higher than the eighteen ninety three flood. That's a bit, little bit speculative, but it's, um, you know, John Oxley was in the, you know, very experienced in, in assessing things, you know, and, you know, in coming up, up to Moreton Bay and up the Brisbane River as well. So finding that and interpreting that map is, is, is brilliant. So I just hope the councillors, we need, need to keep pushing this. So Mayor, you and other councillors and councillors speaking to their local and, uh, uh, state and federal members, you know, we really need to give this a fair and equal push. Otherwise, you know, they, they just get our letter and say, oh, okay, we'll have a look at it. Um, we, we want some action, not, not, not just the mirror treatment of looking into it.
If you put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you so much, uh, councillor Tully. We're now move on to item eighteen, which is the questions on notice, and there are none. Uh, so I'll close the meeting at two fifty five PM. Thank you very much.